Morning, everybody. Welcome to Elgin County, the regular council meeting of February 25. Next on the agenda is adoption of the minutes. Go ahead.
Resolved that the minutes and closed minutes of the meeting held on February 11th, 2025 be adopted.
Hoover and Secor, please. Whitner and Noble. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have disclosure of peculiar interest, nature, general nature thereof. Not seeing any. We'll move down to item four, petitions, presentations, and delegations. And today we have the Director Heather Sheridan from the St. Thomas Elgin Social Services Service Review. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, your worship and members of council. We are happy to be here this morning to share with you the work that we're doing in the county of Elgin. We usually bring a lot of data with us, but today we decided we would bring some information about sort of what we're doing on the ground in the county, how people can access service, and we'll be back at another date this year to do more of a data sort of deep dive, but today we thought it might be helpful for you and the public just to know a little bit about what's happening on the ground in your communities. So as usual, I brought with me the three leads for our different service areas, and we're going to start off with Joanne from Ontario Works.
Good morning, and thank you for your time here today. So I'm here to provide an overview of Ontario Works and emergency assistance. There are two critical programs that support individuals by providing financial, that are facing financial hardship in our community. These programs provide financial support while helping individuals work towards stability and independence. OW provides financial assistance for basic needs and connects people to employment and support services. Eligibility is based on financial need and willingness to participate in activities. So who can apply? Anyone can apply for Ontario Works, but they must be an Ontario resident and meeting income and asset limits to qualify. So last year, we had 1,387 Ontario Works applications that were processed. On average, 86 cases exited Ontario Works each month, and 96 cases were added. And so the ministry projects an 8.5% increase for our caseload between 2024 and 2025. So in December 2024, we were on board with provincial centralized intake expansion. In centralized intake, what it does is it streamlines the application process by shifting the initial eligibility decision and notices to the province. The intent is to reduce the amount of administrative burden on local offices. The system was also implemented to make applications faster and more accessible for clients, and this allows a local office to focus on more value-added services. So how it works is for most applications, clients apply online or by telephone. If they need one-on-one help, our team is available to help guide them through the process. They can track their application online using a status tracker or by telephone. The province makes the initial eligibility decision and issues the first payment, but all payments are processed locally. Applicants have four days to submit the information. At that time, they'll get a withdrawal letter if they haven't, but they still have a full 30 days from the date of application to submit information without having to reapply. So since the province makes the decision, the initial decision about eligibility appeals for the initial decision go through them. But once approved, the caseworkers locally take over, ensuring that the clients remain eligible and receive the support they need to move towards stability. So the real work really does begin when the person qualifies and receives that first payment. Then they'll meet with local staff, confirm ongoing eligibility, and provide case management supports. So with the rising caseload, caseworkers play a vital role in ensuring timely support, connecting clients to the right services, and guiding them towards independence. Their work goes beyond eligibility reviews. They are the front line. They're helping individuals and families navigate challenges and build a path forward. When any new files since December 2024 are closed, any overpayments will now be transferred to the province for collection. Well, this process applies for most of the applications. The local office is still responsible for emergency assistance, temporary care applications, under-18 applicants, and reinstates when we determine eligibility for those, initial eligibility for those programs. So Ontario Works provides financial, financial health and discretionary benefits like medical supplies and vision care, but it's really a lot more about than just the financial assistance we provide. It's about helping people move forward. Caseworkers assess clients' needs and help create self-sufficiency plans. They connect clients to jobs, training, and community services, and they work in offices in St. Thomas, West Lorne, Elmer, and community locations like the Inn, Family Central, and St. Thomas Elgin General Hospital, as well as other locations. We really want to be accessible to provide support where clients need us. So their work, the caseworker's work, is really making a huge difference, helping people build sustainable futures. So the next slide, I just wanted to go over some myths and misconceptions about Ontario Works. So the first one is people in Ontario Works don't want to work. In fact, 42% of our clients last year were referred to employment Ontario for job support supports. Many others face really complex challenges. For example, 7% of our caseload are unhoused. 366 clients were referred to the Ontario Disability Support Program, and more could qualify for an Ontario Disability Support Program if we had additional healthcare services available. Second one is Ontario Works covers all basic needs. In fact, a single person, the maximum they can receive is just $733 a month. So that's far below the cost to rent food and other essentials. Many rely on food banks, other community agencies, just enough to, just so they can survive and get by. And people stay on Ontario Works forever, is what other people think. Most people use Ontario Works temporarily, will transition to work, education, or other supports. It's difficult for us to determine how many people leave for employment, because if people leave Ontario Works, it's a bad time in their life generally, and they don't want to look back. So we know at least 20% of our clients leave for employment, but we think the numbers could be a bit more than 50% if we had the actual data. Everyone in Ontario Works is employable. Not everyone on Ontario Works is employable. We're a gateway to other programs, so we help people get on EI benefits, WSIB, Canada Pension Plan Disability, Ontario Disability Support Program. So it's a lot about getting people connected to the right program. We also have many clients transition to ODSP and Canada Pension Plan Disability because they have significant health issues. But again, this process takes a lot of time and requires healthcare professionals to complete the disability adjudication packages that are required. And the last one, Ontario Works participants don't want to work. In fact, 9% of our caseload is actually working right now, but they just don't earn enough to get them off assistance, and we help bridge that gap as they work towards financial stability. So the last program I'm going to speak about today is emergency assistance. It provides short-term help for those in urgent need who don't qualify for Ontario Works. It assists in crises like facing eviction within seven days, leaving an abusive relationship, personal safety concerns, being affected by natural disasters, and the last one up there is for Ukrainians who enter Canada under the Q8 program. So the examples I gave last year, we talked briefly about the support we provide in Elmer when there was the fire downtown. So recently, we supported residents in Bayham with just under $15,000 for the unauthorized trailer park. And what we did was help them secure housing and assist with moving costs to get them reestablished elsewhere. So when crises happen in our community, we're here to help, and we want to help. So please reach out to us. So just in closing, Ontario Works and emergency assistance are lifelines for those facing financial hardship. By providing financial aid and connecting people to support some resources, we're not just addressing the immediate needs. We're empowering individuals to build a stable future. So I really want to thank you for your attention and your support. Thank you so much.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this morning to provide an update on housing stability services. My name is Danielle Nielsen, and I manage both social housing and homelessness prevention throughout our municipality. So to give you a bit of an overview for social housing, in total, we have approximately 1,120 units of social housing throughout our municipality, so that includes both St. Thomas and Elgin County. It's a combination of municipally-owned resources as well as housing units that are owned and operated by nonprofit providers. In addition to our social housing units, we also operate approximately 150 rent supplements that are provided to help offset the affordability challenges that households might be experiencing in their current housing. So to manage tenancy selection for low-income households, we operate a centralized waitlist. That waitlist currently consists of approximately 1,700 households, with wait times being somewhere between three years and 10 years for folks that are on that list. And something that's interesting about that data is that it's more than double pre-pandemic times. On that waitlist, the composition of households include about 725 people who would be described as single, 675 who would be described as families, and also approximately 285 folks or households that would be described as seniors in need of low-income housing. In terms of location, we know that about 70% of the people on our waitlist are members of St. Thomas Elgin, while 30% are households that reside outside of our municipality, including people with no fixed address. Something that's helpful for people to know, including council and the public, is that we prioritize one particular population. That would be people who are fleeing domestic violence and/or human trafficking. They qualify as a special priority for social housing, which means that they would be moved to the top of the list if that was the situation that they were experiencing. And I've linked that policy. It's a provincial policy for anyone who might be curious to learn more. These social housing resources are aimed at creating housing stability for low-income households through subsidies and lower rents than you would typically find on the private market. Next slide, please. So to give you some social housing highlights from 2024, our office supported the development of new affordable seniors housing. We know that low-income seniors are a priority population with unique vulnerabilities, and we're also seeing a growing need for this population. So we've been pleased to be able to support the development of new projects, including a new project in the Dunn and Dunwich community. We have also invested over $500,000 in capital repairs. So again, that's across our municipality. We know that it's important to increase housing stock, but it is equally important to invest in sustaining and maintaining the current housing that we do have as well. In 2024, we assisted over 90 households to move into social housing. That's often one of the best parts of the job. And we've also provided service manager advice and guidance to prospective operators and developers. So we've been happy, both myself and my Director Heather Sheridan, to make ourselves available for consultation, to create connections, and to advocate and move the dial on potential new housing projects. Next slide, please. So this next slide focuses on homelessness prevention program, also known as HPP, which is a provincially funded program that supports Ontario municipalities to provide services to people at risk of or experiencing homelessness. In St. Thomas Elgin, we use HPP to fund emergency shelters, supportive housing, rent supplement programs, housing stability, financial assistance, which is often for rent arrears or utility arrears, as well as a number of different day services throughout our community. In our municipality, because of the strong partnerships that we have and our ability to collaborate well with each other, we're able to stretch the HPP dollars far. But it's important to note that this is a severely underfunded program when you compare it to the level of need that exists in our community. Next slide, please. So to give you a real-time sense of what those needs look like, this is an overview of our By Names data. By Names data is a real-time list of people experiencing homelessness, which allows us to better connect them to services and supports when they need them. A couple of local facts about our By Names data is that it was implemented in July of 2020. To date, 825 unique people have been referred to the By Names data. That's as of the end of 2024. Majority of referrals are urban, so from within St. Thomas. Approximately 10% of the referrals we receive are from Elgin County, so more of those rural areas. To date, this is something we're really proud of. 65% of all households who have been referred to our By Names data have, in fact, been housed. And approximately, this slide actually, we've reduced homelessness a little further since this slide was created. So approximately 125 households currently right now are still at risk of experiencing homelessness. That represents about 15% of all households who have ever been referred. Even though we've had some great success in our community, you can see from this data that we still have great need and that our work is cut out ahead of us for us to be able to continue to drive down the number of people experiencing homelessness. And just as a quick plug, we're currently working on plans to bring a national expert to our community to create more information, education, and awareness related to homelessness. His visit is scheduled for June, and we'll be sure to send an invite to council directly once those details are available. Next slide, please. This slide provides you with some of the highlights from our success through HPP in 2024. So we assisted over 400 households with homelessness prevention. We've provided emergency shelter to over 250 unique individuals. Our teams responded to over 150 requests for street outreach services, and in fact, were able to house 18 people during that time directly from the streets into housing. And we've achieved reductions in chronic homelessness, which is not something very many municipalities are able to celebrate right now. To give this a bit more context for you, we were monitored closely and then confirmed by Built for Zero Canada in the spring of 2024 for having reduced chronic homelessness by 30%. And in fact, in recent years, our community has emerged as a leading Canadian community in its efforts to respond to and reduce homelessness. Next slide, please. I would be remiss if I didn't take the time to highlight some of the great county work and partnerships that happen with social services. Family Central in Elmer, as an example, continues to operate as an exceptional nonprofit in supporting its community members who are experiencing a variety of different vulnerabilities. This includes operating day programs related to food security and community referrals, as well as supportive and affordable housing. West Elgin Community Health Center recognizes that housing stability impacts health and wellness, and they work closely with our office to find solutions, to create solution, to find solutions and create solutions for members of our, in the West. This includes working not only with the housing services area, but also with Joanne's team in Ontario Works. We're also grateful to Elgin OPP, who have been able to work with us in crisis situations successfully. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank our local legions for their work and partnership that supported St. Thomas Elgin in becoming the second Canadian community to functionally end veterans homelessness. Next slide, please. Lastly, I just wanted to share some information about how the community can reach out for support from Housing Stability Services. So this slide provides you with information on how to access that support in person, by phone, and online. We're open Monday to Friday, 8:30 to 4:30. And I also wanted to share a great community resource with all of you that the YWCA produces every year, which is called Community Connections, and there's a link to that guide on this slide as well. It includes resources on housing and homelessness, as well as a number of other resources such as food security, legal resources, newcomer services, and healthcare, just to name a few. And that's it for me. So I will hand over to my colleague Teresa. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Teresa Slowski, and I'm the Manager of Children's Services. And I want to thank you very much for the opportunity to highlight the work that Children's Services is doing to support the families that are accessing early years and childcare programs in Elgin County. So first, I would like to just talk a little bit about C-Wellk. We call it C-Wellk. It's the Canada-wide early learning childcare system. Back in March of 2022, the province entered into an agreement with the federal government addressing the childcare needs in the entire country, but in the province. And the four main mandates that we had were, that we were given, was affordability, accessibility, quality inclusion. And so you've heard about the $10 a day childcare program. This is the C-Wellk program. So I just want to talk a little bit about where we are in that process. But first, I'm going to highlight some of the achievements that we've done in Elgin County. We are very, very fortunate to have 100% participation by our childcare programs in Elgin County. They are all part of C-Wellk programs. Not every community is in that, in that case, but that really works well for us, because every single family doesn't have to choose between paying more for childcare. Everyone is within the same, the same program, so everybody is getting access to the program. So we're excited about that. Again, the ministry has been working, the government has been working towards decreasing fees, and right now we are at $22 a day, and that fee will continue on to be around $10 a day by 2026. What I'm super excited to share is that we really, because we knew the ministry was focusing on the fees, we really prioritize expanding the system. And so we opened two new child cares in Elgin County this year, in Elmer and in West Lorne. And we also expanded, we also focused on expanding programs in our early-on system. So these just, these photos just talk about those expansions, and they have added spaces for families that were needing childcare. Next slide, please. But with any new system or program, there are always challenges, and some of the challenges that we are addressing are highlighted by staffing shortages. When COVID hit, we definitely lost many, many staff, and there were challenges with wages, but part of the C-Wellk program is to raise wages to support quality inclusion. And so we are definitely seeing a shift where we are getting more staff, and we're very excited about that, but this is still a battle that we're still working on. One of the other pieces that we wanted to, that we wanted to focus on was to support the staff that we have in the system by acknowledging, acknowledging them on appreciation days, and we just started a brand-new mentorship program that, it's called Igniting the Spark, sorry, where educators can come together and network, collaborate, develop leadership skills, and build the confidence to stay and work in the programs that we currently have. Slide, please. One of the biggest challenges that I'm sure you've heard about is the infrastructure and the fact that there, we don't have enough spaces. Our waiting lists continue to grow. And so we really are prioritizing in Children's Services to try to expand, expand the system. And we're doing that through partnerships, working with the programs that we currently have to see if they can expand their programs, but also putting out expressions of interest in RFPs to see if we can bring new providers into our communities. And so we're in that process right now, and we're hopeful that we are going to continue on our plan to expand the system. And what does the future of childcare and early years programs look like? Well, we received a new funding formula that was given to us at the end of, the end of last year, and the funding formula is really a large shift in how childcare programs are being funded through the government. Originally, there was funding, and the parent fees made up the difference, but now that the parent fees have gone, some of the fees have gone from $80 down to $22. Those centers are not getting those fees, and so the funding formula now provides those, that money through, through the government. So we are doing a shift in understanding about this funding formula and how our programs are run. We are also expanding our programs. We continue to focus on expanding our programs and the earlier system. One of the other things that we are also doing is really working hard with our resource consulting, third-party program that we work with them, to really make sure that families that have children with special needs get the resources that they need, that get connected to those resources. And all these things together, we are continuing to work on our service plan. We made the decision to put a pause on releasing our new service plan because of all the changes with the funding formula and with C-Wellk. We wanted to make sure that we really had a good understanding of what the changes are and how that would impact our service before we came to council with, with our new service plan in the community as well. So we hope to have that in the next few months to really, once, we're still in the process of understanding the formula. But once we get there, we are going to be issuing a new service plan, and we will bring that to council to make you aware of what our plans are for the future. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to our update. And I'm going to turn it over to Heather.
Thank you. We actually didn't ask if there was any questions throughout that, so we're happy to do that if anybody has any questions for any of us.
Any questions from council members? I guess I'll go first. So this may be directed to Teresa. With you still looking for opportunities for childcare, do those facilitators, whether it's milestones or whatever, do they rent properties or strictly purchase and own the property or?
So it's, it's interesting in Elgin County that there are many providers that have been here for, for many years. Just want to make sure that this microphone was on, that many providers that have been here for many years have purchased their own properties. But we're seeing a trend now where new providers that are coming into the community are either looking to rent or are also purchasing. So it really depends on what's available, like what, what type of buildings are available and what spaces are available. New constructions, there just isn't the funding for that, but renting, renovating, leasing, and sometimes purchasing buildings that are suitable for renovations are available.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. For you to, Child, Children's Services in Elgin County's, licensed spots for children's services is certainly something that's at a premium, and you would think with the demand, that there would be more people who would be willing to, to provide children's services. I hear you talking about spaces. Is, is that the main obstacle to increased children's spaces? Or is it lack of funding, or is it licensed spots, or what is the main obstacle?
Sorry, thank you. We are very limited in the number of spaces that we have. There's two kind of opportunities for childcare. There's not-for-profit, and there are for-profit spaces. And a lot of the providers that are coming into the system are for-profit. The ministry has deemed that we can only have 10% of our allotment of spaces that are for-profit. So we currently have an RFP that's running right now that is offering 42 spaces. So we don't know the outcome of that because it's still open, but we will be offering 42 spaces for the for-profit operators. When not-for-profits are coming in, we have more spaces for them, but again, that, it's, it's challenging because there's not a lot. We do have some startup grant funding, but sometimes it's not enough to renovate or to do what's necessary. And a lot of the not-for-profits are not coming in with a lot of funds, so that's a challenge. But we were, are working with the ministry to make the ministry aware that we need to really work on the infrastructure and to support more money for building, more money for renovations, more money for, for capital. So that is the challenge. So it's, we definitely are seeing lots of different people that are interested, but they're not always a good fit for our community, or they don't have the resources that they need to actually follow through and build the childcare and, and work with that.
Don't leave.
Don't leave.
I got one more question.
Sure.
So what, what kind of square footage are they generally looking for, for a startup?
So it depends on, not so much the square footage, because it's a little bit, like, it can be bigger or smaller, but we are looking, the, the center that we opened in West Lorne is for 15 children, and it's a smaller center. So it was really two classrooms in a school. I don't, I think that's, I don't know what the square footage of that is. But we can go as large as 88 spaces, which is the large, like a large center. The one in, in Elmer is a 49-spaced center, and that was, I think, six classrooms that was built. So I'm not sure what the actual square footage of that is, but it really depends. It's not just about square footage. It's about making sure that there is an outdoor play space. So you know, you know, you might need to convert a parking lot into grass space, so there needs to be an outdoor play space. There needs to be adequate windows. This would be a great space, because a certain percentage, I think 25% of the room has to have natural light. So there are buildings that are lovely but don't have the natural light, and you can't put a skylight, or they're two stories. So natural light is really important, having the adequate play space, making sure that you can actually put a kitchen in, because that needs to, you know, you need to have the plumbing for all the bathrooms, all the kitchens. So it's not just about square footage. It really has to be, I don't want to say ideal, but it really has to be made for that type of building. I'm not sure, we, we were able to convert a space in a strip mall for a very small nursery school program, but that took a lot of resource to do that, because they didn't have the right, they didn't have the right plumbing. So it's not really just about square footage. It's about all the extra stuff that goes along with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to walk away.
I just want to add, if there is somebody interested, Teresa has all that expertise about what is needed, and so she's happy to be contacted by anybody who's interested in something like that.
Counselors Jager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Question for you, Heather. Where could we find a copy of your budget that would have a simple breakdown of provincial contribution, St. Thomas, Elgin County? Is that available somewhere?
Sorry. I'll ask the treasurer and see if we can put something together for you that is, you know, more direct, sort of, you don't need all the little things about, yeah, yeah, all of the paper that were mine, or, you know, staples or whatever it is. But I'll see if I can get something together for the whole council that can help you with that, because I know you're going through the process right now. Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anything further for Heather and the team? That doesn't look like it. So thanks so much for coming in. Appreciate you giving us an update.
Thank you so much for having us. See you.
I think we have a resolution.
Resolved that the presentation from the Director of St. Thomas Elgin Social Services be received and filed.
Hoover and Secor, please. Noble and Ketchumah. All in favor? Motion carries. Moving down to Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole.
Hoover and Secor, please. Hens and Jager. All in favor? Motion carries. Move down to item 61, Manager of Procurement and Risk, Procurement Activity Report for the fourth quarter from October to December 2024. Mike, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Uh, through you to, uh, County Council. So this, uh, quarterly procurement activity report just details the awards of contracts that were approved by directors valued at between fifteen and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. The report covers the period from October to December of last year. The list of the projects, the supplier and the amounts are on Appendix A. I can confirm that all contracts do comply with our policy and I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mike. Uh, any questions for Mike? Very straightforward. There's no questions. We have a resolution.
Resolved that the report titled Procurement Activity Report Q four, October first, twenty-twenty-four to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. From the Manager of Procurement and Risk dated February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, be received and filed.
Over in seconds, please. Uh, Latham and Pence? All in favor? Motion carries. Down to item six-two, uh, Director of Homes and Senior Services. Emergency Plans, Eldon County and Thames Valley District School Board, MOU. Go ahead, Michelle. Welcome.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Warden, through to members of council. Uh, the purpose of this report is to seek council approval for execution of an agreement with the Corporation of the County of Elgin. Specifically Elgin Manor and Thames Valley District School Board, so specifically, uh, Southhold Public School. And this is for the use of each other's facilities in the event that a temporary evacuation is required. Uh, you'll hear me speaking regularly about emergency planning requirements. So we are required as a long-term care home to have an emergency plan in place. That includes the identification of safe evacuation locations, the use of which is pre-arranged. Uh, similarly, the Ministry of Education is required to have for each school to identify a safe evacuation location. In case they have a temporary emergency. So, uh, myself and managers from Elgin Manor and, uh, team members from Southwood Public School. Did tour both locations to determine feasibility and suitability of the temporary evacuation for both the home and the school. And a draft memorandum is part of your agenda package, which outlines, uh, the requirements for both locations. Uh, if approved, uh, the draft MOU, uh, would be communicated, the requirements of that would be communicated to those. Requiring that information and our emergency plans would be updated. So, uh, staff do recommend that council authorize execution of the memorandum of understanding to support both Elgin Manor. And Southwood Public School for emergency situations. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions for Michelle? Uh, seeing any, uh, resolution, please?
Resolved that the report titled Homes Emergency Plans, Elgin County and Thames Valley District School Board, MOU. From the Director of Homes and Senior Services dated February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, be received and filed. And that council authorized the Director of Homes and Senior Services to execute the memorandum of understanding for emergency planning. With the Corporation of the County of Elgin and, and Thames Valley District School Board.
Over in seconds, please. Ketchabaugh and Latham? Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. And moving down to Director of Engineering Services Administration Building Exterior Renovation Option Presentation. Go ahead, Peter. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of County Council. Good morning. County Administration Building was originally constructed in nineteen thirty-nine and occupied by the County of Elgin since nineteen eighty-five. Building's exterior brick is original and the majority of the bricks are cracking and spalling. The windows and doors were installed in nineteen eighty-four and at the end of their service life. Number of investments to improve the functionality and accessibility of the building have been made. Most notably, new elevators have been added to the front of the building to ensure barrier-free access to all levels. Investments are now required to the building exterior. Fishburne, Sheridan and Associates from London were selected through a competitive RFP process in twenty-twenty-four. To develop a renovation options and, uh, prepare construction tender documents. And construction administration services for the project. Stefano Rulio is here with, uh, he's the project engineer and the director for Fishburne Sheridan London. And he's here with his associate Craig and they will be presenting the project options report to council. The report develops, uh, uh, comprehensive options that detail the existing conditions of the building. And the options for rehabilitation. And they've considered the durability, energy efficiency, aesthetics, maintenance, sustainability and lifecycle cost. And the resulting recommendation is to provide an overclad of the existing administration building with aluminum composite panels. And they've brought samples with them also for council to look at for many of the options. Also to replace the existing windows. And I think you've heard me state before, there are five hundred windows in this building, there are a few of them, with aluminum double glazed windows. And finally, the doors would be replaced with metal hollow doors with extruded polystyrene infill. The total estimated cost is five million dollars plus HST. Staff also supports the recommended option for various reasons. Firstly, the existing brick would remain encapsulated. And that would limit the risk of removing the out, the exterior brick and potentially reducing, uh, additional risks and costs to the project. Not removing the exterior brick would also reduce the construction schedule by fifty percent. And that would be less disrupt, disruptive to staff and tenants as well as the public. The anticipated design life of the composite aluminum panels is forty years. And that would coincide with the windows that we're proposing to replace, as well as many of the other buildings' assets. Including the elevators and the HVAC systems. And finally, this represents the lowest lifecycle cost solution in order to remain fiscally responsible. The twenty-twenty-five capital budget has allocated five point three million dollars toward the projects, so there are sufficient funds within the budget. And if approved by council, the next steps would be to develop a construction tender package and begin the procurement process. In order to put this investment into context. The administration building is approximately seventy-seven thousand, five hundred square feet in size. About sixty percent of its space is allocated to county needs and functions in common areas. And forty percent of its space is for tenants. We have collected approximately five hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-four as revenue from the tenants. And it, it costs us approximately two hundred thousand dollars a year just for repairs and utilities to run the administration building. We've spent approximately eleven million dollars to date on the renovations that you see before you, these beautiful council chambers, the elevators out front. Some other renovations to the first floor. That's been amortized at two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars over the forty-year design life. And you'll note that that also corresponds with the design life of the option that's being recommended in this report. If these renovations were approved and we proceeded with council, that would amortize an additional hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. For the next forty years. Those are some metrics that, uh, I thought would be, uh, informative, uh, for council to, to, to fully, uh, um, contemplate. The options presented to you. Also, uh, we are fully occupied here. There was a number of years where we were soliciting, uh, new tenants to the building. We're fully occupied. We're going to be embarking upon a space need study in twenty-twenty-five. And that's intended to fully optimize, uh, the existing spaces that are used in the building and to accommodate future growth. Because we don't have a lot of more, we don't have any more space to expand. We'll also be completing a market rent analysis. This was last completed in two thousand and eighteen. It's out of date. We expect those lease rates to increase and that will provide additional revenue to the County of Elgin. So right now, there's a comprehensive presentation that Stefano and Craig, his associate, will be presenting. And, um, after that or during that, if council has any questions, uh, we'll all be pleased to, to answer those.
Go ahead, Warden and Council. Uh, my name's Stefano Rello and I am a professional engineer. And I also sit on the, uh, the board for, uh, the International Institute of Building Enclosure Consultants. Uh, this is my colleague Craig McKinnis. He is a, uh, CET, uh, Civil Engineer and Technologist. So we've got this, uh, this presentation that we put together with all the options. Speak with Peter and Ryan. Uh, it's a, it's a long presentation, about sixty-two pages long. So I don't want to, I don't want to go through each slide. Uh, I think what, uh, I'd like to have it more of an open forum. If you have any technical questions that you have, we do have a bunch of, uh, of samples that we brought with us today. So I guess, uh, if we could go to, uh, the next slide, I just want to show an opening from the, uh, from the elevator project. Uh, showing the existing wall system, uh, of this building. Uh, I believe it is, it may be on the next slide here. Uh, just to show you kind of the challenges that we're, that we're kind of dealing with, uh, for the cladding portion of this project. Uh, yeah, be the next slide, I believe. Next one. There we go. Okay. So yeah, this was at the elevator project. Uh, the, the past project, there was a, there was an opening in the, in the wall that gave us a good understanding what kind of structure we're dealing with here. Uh, the building here is a cast-in-place concrete frame. Uh, so you've got, uh, you've got these columns and beams with infill panels. Uh, the challenge with that is that the infill, uh, is not actually connected to the structure. Uh, so the structure itself, anything that we, that we do, uh, with the cladding approach, we would have to tie back to, uh, this is existing structure. So we took that into consideration with all of the options that we put forth. And, uh, that is why with, uh, our recommendation, we did the, the ACP panel, which is the aluminum composite panel. Uh, there would be a structural system that gets tied back to the structure and then the panel is on the outside face. One of the things that Peter mentioned is that, uh, leaving the brick in place is probably our, our least, uh, obstructive. To the, the occupants of the building, understanding there has been a lot of projects in this building, want to try and limit that. So I did want to pass around, uh, whether we want to pass around now or, or we can do it after. Yeah, these are, these would be a, a example of what an ACP panel is. So it's a robust panel, uh, sandwiched in between a non, uh, a, a non-combustible, uh, material. So it's, uh, it's around two and a half pounds per square foot. So that's another reason why we would need to, uh, put together some sort of tie-back structure in order to support the weight of that. So, uh, that is, uh, that's one of, uh, one of the options that we have there. The other options, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time on it because it, it does involve removing the existing brick. Which is going to inflate our cost, uh, by around fifty percent. Uh, so the other options we have is, uh, exterior insulated fashion system, which is EFS. The thing with the EFS is that if we're able to remove the brick, uh, we can match the brick, uh, brick here. These are actually, uh, a thin brick veneer. You've got an insulation, uh, in the backside. So you can, uh, have the opportunity to increase the thermal efficiency of the wall system. However, the caveat there is we need to remove the brick on the outside. So that's a, that's a large cost, uh, with that option. So I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time, unless there was questions with this option, uh, we can get into that. But I thought, uh, with the other one that we had was, uh, we can remove the, uh, brick and go back with brick also. That's another option that we had. So, yeah, if there is any, uh, questions that you had on the cladding, uh, portion of the project. Maybe we can skip to the slide to the ACP panel to show like, uh, how the, how the change of that would be. That would be option three C. Yeah, so that it, the option that we're going to be showing, uh, just gives a, gives a highlight of what the, what the aesthetic of the building would look like. It is, uh, uh, with the, with the option one and option two, we're able to make it look like the existing, uh, cladding. There we go. So that was. Yeah, so the, this is kind of the idea here is that we can, we can choose any color. We can, kind of revitalize the, the building from an aesthetic standpoint. But that is, uh, it's definitely a, an option that we can, we can work with. And with that, with that main highlight being that the brick is staying in place and we're over-cladding, uh, the building. So yeah, if there's any questions with the, with the cladding portion.
That's Latham. Go ahead.
To you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to ask a question. Those joints on that cladding. I mean, if, if you get any damp behind and it freezes really hard, it's, it's going to have the pushing effect. So do you ever find a problem with that?
It's turned off on me. Yeah, so leaving the system in place, it's actually, it's called a rain screen system. So the internal pressure behind the panel and the, the outside air, uh, would be the same pressure. So we allow for, uh, air to move in behind the panel. So you wouldn't have any issue with moisture, uh, on, on the brick surface. It'd be able to escape from behind that panel.
Counselor Widner, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Just a question. You put these panels on and the bricks still keep pushing out, will it bulge the panels or is, is there enough strength there to retain that?
Yeah, so what, uh, another portion of that, uh, option is that we're going to be doing the localized repair. Uh, so at some of the lentils, they've, they've swollen over time. So we'd be pulling those lentils out, replacing them, doing some localized brick repair. And then the structure for the ACB panel is actually, it's connected from the header above the window and below on the sill. So it's actually not connected to the brick, it's to the structure. So the, the brick itself wouldn't have an effect on the, on the panel because it'd kind of be sandwiched in behind.
I'm just curious about the color fastness. I mean, the sun's pretty brutal, um, forty years. Is there any guarantee on the color or do we have to paint this thing occasionally?
Yeah, when we, when we put together the specification for it, we could definitely stipulate in the specification for a warranty of that. Uh, there would be no fade panels. There's all sorts of different types that we can go with. But yeah, there would be a guarantee on, on that through the manufacturer that would be selected through here. Uh, it'd be more of a performance, uh, spec being publicly funded. So we wouldn't necessarily go straight to a manufacturer. We would open it up based on the performance of the characteristics of the material. And then from there, we would build that into the specification, uh, with colors and, and based on, uh, standards, like CSA standards and things like that.
Counselor Sloan.
Thank you, Warden. Through you, um, what's the rating of the current brick? I mean, if you have a brand-new building versus a building that's this age, how do you rate the brick? And, and I'd just like to understand how you make that decision.
Yeah, so based on past projects and, and the visual appeal of the, of the brick, uh, from our professional standpoint, being building envelope consultants. That's kind of how we would rate the brick. Uh, you can look at, uh, uh, the, the deficiencies of the brick, whether it's spalled, uh, cracking, things like that. That help to, uh, put a date on, on the brick itself. And, and depending on the, the age of the building, uh, this one being built in nineteen thirty-nine. An older brick doesn't last as long as some of the newer stuff. So, uh, that, that's kind of where we came up with the, the seventy-five years for, uh, a brick veneer.
Okay. Supplementary through Warden. Um, so safety isn't an issue? With the current brick, is it?
I would say it is. Yeah, yeah. Uh, if you, if you didn't do any, uh, like you didn't do any repairs, you do have the, uh, the risk of brick falling off of the building. Especially around, uh, windows, because as the, as the steel swells, uh, above the windows. Uh, it expands in volume and that causes the brick to, to crack and it, it could potentially fall off of the building. So that, consider that to be a safety, uh, issue.
So just to follow up on that, a brick hasn't fallen. You're saying that it could if it was left. Is that correct?
Yes, there's potential.
So whether it comes to potential, Queens Park is forty-seven years older than this building and it hasn't had the bricks fixed. Would you consider it a building that's safe for accidents?
I'm not familiar with what Queens Park, uh, building is. I'm not sure if it's a clay brick or not, or if it's stone. I, I'm not, uh, I'm not sure on that building, but there would be, uh, differing, uh, styles of brick. Uh, depending on the substrate of the wall system, there could be wall systems that actually have a, uh, air and vapor barrier behind them. That would extend the lifespan of a brick system. In this case, there is no air and vapor barrier in this building. Uh, it's a mass wall, so there's no moisture control. So that, uh, kind of exasperates the, the, uh, effect of, of deterioration of this brick.
Uh, so it's cosmetic. I'm just trying to get through because we're asking rate pairs to spend on a building here about five million dollars, which comes through to about. Fifty-two dollars per person that lives in Elton County. So through the warden, is it eighty percent cosmetic and twenty percent structural? I, I'd like, because you're a professional and an engineer and I'm looking to you to help me understand. So I, I hope you, I hope you appreciate where the comments are coming from. So if that, I could get an understanding of, of that, please.
Yeah, I wouldn't really consider it to be, uh, aesthetic like eighty-twenty. Uh, I'd probably say it's closer to like a fifty-fifty, like you do. I'd probably say it's closer to like a fifty-fifty, like you do have the option to aesthetically enhance the building. But you do also need to do something with your with your brick also. So these are the options that we put forward for that. We tried to limit the option by doing an over-clad. If you wanted to get into like your energy savings, that's where you're kind of getting into your option one and two. Unfortunately, with the the three C option, there's not a whole lot that you can do with that. You're just kind of you're you're repairing locally and you're doing a bit of a screen on top to do the do the repairs and then go over top of the of the wall system.
Great. Thank you, Warden. Very helpful. Oh, sorry.
Peter, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just like to bring counsel's attention and we were talking about the condition of the bricks. If you go to page fifty-two of the presentation, something that I've understood, we've replaced sections of spalling, cracking brick over the years. And most of those occurred. And if you look even out the windows, you can see how the top courses of the building have been totally replaced. You know, re-pointing the brick was options we had looked at, but it's the physical brick itself that's deteriorating. And the reason I want to bring your attention to page fifty-two, because this was even surprising to me. If you look at photo number two, which is in the top right corner, and you see the shadow cast by the sun, that should be a straight line. So you can actually see where chunks of that brick have actually fallen. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. I know from being in construction my entire working career that when you start to see that, you have to do something about it. It's it's not an option and it's not quite frankly, it's not cosmetic at that point. It's it's safety issues and structural issues from my experience over the past forty years. Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden, the the aluminum panels to go over top and they have the airflow in behind, so they're not going to create a vapor barrier and stop the draft in the building because there's still gonna be flow. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's exactly correct. Yeah, that's the idea behind that system.
Counselor Sloan. Thank you. Question for Peter. Do you have any tenants under the current agreements that are here past twenty-twenty-seven?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Mayor Sloan. To be honest with you, I think we have a lease that's coming to a I think the for longest tenant is Graham Scott ends with the lease agreement we have.
It is. You're right. Okay, well, I guess when you look at it in my background through the warden is looking at a a business case for a building. We don't have any place or, you know, discussion was made about five hundred thousand dollars and whether we could add to the the rent. We don't have any tenants past twenty-twenty-seven. The budget from what I can see on the building has gone from twelve, which I asked about in the summer, to now sixteen or seventeen. At the same time, we have interior heating and cooling, which everyone that uses this room knows is insufficient. We we hear about safety, but yet I'm not sure that there hasn't been thought given to how isolated areas where there are issues, this could be taken on and addressed. It's fine if the council wants to spend five million dollars on a building that doesn't have any tenants post twenty-twenty-seven. I just don't know if that's the best business case for continued operations. And I think also as the largest tenant or the second largest tenant down the hall, our lease is done the end of next year. So will we be paying more because of this? You're you're doing a classification of what people could pay. I just don't see where, other than maybe some isolated areas where there's shailing, to use safety as an issue to spend three million dollars on essentially a cosmetic operation. I I don't know how it's warranted. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to the Mayor Sloan. It's the reason why the windows and the facade are being looked at at the same time is when we're looking at the windows, we can't do the windows without doing something with the lentils. If you look at the picture back on one of the original pages, you'll see that the lentils almost double the size. So it's actually lost its structural integrity. So we've kind of paired the two together because we have to remove brick to do replace the windows. And that's kind of why we're putting the package all together as one one item.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Through you, Warden. We talked about heritage in this building. Has any consultation been given with local heritage groups? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan, there's no existing heritage designation on this building.
Thank you.
So we've had full occupancy for quite a few years. Do you see that changing?
Through you, Mr. Warden. This building, we must be providing a good service. Tenants that come here stay here. We do not have a revolving door of tenants. So we also found during the two thousand eighteen rental market analysis, there aren't any commercial spaces like this in the surrounding area. So if a tenant were to leave, I believe we would be successful in securing a new tenant.
Okay. I I guess if we were to move forward with the proposal of the cladding, take us through the process. So I assume that there'd be a cap put on around the window to seal the rec in place where it wraps around to the existing window. And then the new window will be popped in after that and sealed to keep the water out.
Yeah, that'd be the idea there. If we were to move forward with both the window and the cladding portion, you can integrate those details together. Say that you just did the cladding, you can definitely do that. You do do the cladding and then you would do some sort of cap detail and then a seal. Seal against the window, the existing window.
Thank you. Counselor Sloan.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back to heating and cooling for a minute. Has there been an assessment done with respect to the fact that we have? I've I've brought up again two things. One, it looks like the budget has gone from twelve to sixteen on four fifty sunset. And I'm not sure where the HVAC system is in this with respect to whether air quality on the interior of the building has been considered. As we go forward, those of us that are tenants here know that there's continued issues. So I wanted to ask, as we look to the exterior and these changes, has anyone looked at the HVAC system and air quality? Thank you, Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Counselor Sloan. And Ryan may have more to add than this, but we detailed all of the building elements within the county's asset management plan specifically for the administration building. And and we use building condition assessment reports that we complete every five years to help instruct and inform the decisions we present to county council. The HVAC systems currently have a remaining design life of approximately thirty years, and that's detailed in our asset management plan. As as you noted, they're run by boilers, they're they're the air units that we use right now does not incorporate fresh air into the building, with the exception of the top floors, where as we've renovated those spaces, we have roofed, we have the ability to have rooftop units. So as you know, there's no ducting in this building. So bringing in fresh air is a challenge and a continuing challenge. And those are the challenges with renovating and retrofitting an eighty-year-old structure.
Okay. Continue on.
Yeah, so this is Craig and he'll be gonna speak a little bit on the on the window portion of the of this presentation. So I I just wanna make one statement. A lot of talk was was had on the 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 cladding and the cost of the cladding. There would be a significant reduction in maintenance cost in the immediate. Obviously, just like any system, as it ages, the maintenance costs increase. The aluminum panels would be drastically less than your conventional clay brick. So wanted to make that that statement. As far as the windows are concerned, we've got existing aluminum windows with insulated glazing units, IGUs. They're approximately forty years old, tired. We did observe failure of both the frame and the glazing units. The mechanisms of the windows have also grown tired and have failed in some cases. You you mentioned air leakage. A lot of that is associated with the windows. Your your weakest point in your wall system is going to be your window on a thermal standpoint. In in this case, we we've got a very poor performance of the existing windows. The new window that we're proposing is also an aluminum-framed window. However, it's thermally broken. There's there's a section of vinyl in the middle of the the window that reduces cold air being drawn into the building during the winter or warm air being drawn into the building, which would drastically reduce your your draft inside the building. On top of that, we've also included for new seals around window frames, which would also reduce airdraft. The proposed system that we have mimics very closely what you have now, but a modernized version of, which includes a double-glazed IGU, basically like-for-like, which with what's in place now, with significant improvements just based on modern technology. So I don't know if there's any questions, not not as glamorous as the as the cladding by any means, but.
Would there be any film on the window for?
Yeah, so there it there are gone filled and with low-y glazing units. Yeah.
Any other question? Counselor Whitner?
Yes, thank you, Warden. Just a question. What is the warranty on these windows? They're pretty high-tech, but what's the warranty on them?
So the warranty can vary. We've got a life expectancy of approximately forty years. That that can be increased with with regular maintenance, similar to what you guys have in place now. So we're we're projecting forty years on these proposed windows.
There are gone filth. So what happens if the gas does leak out? Are they covered in that circumstance?
Sorry, that would be specific to the IGU. There there is anticipated failure throughout the life cycle of a window frame. The IGUs would have a lower life expectancy than the frame themselves. The frame can exceed forty years easily. IGUs thirty to forty years is pretty typical.
Counselor Giger, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I know our current windows, I think, open and I was curious to, do we ever open them? And if if not, because often buildings with heating and cooling, we end up never opening the windows. So will the new windows still open? I'm assuming there's a difference in cost. So just curious about the plan.
Go ahead, Peter.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Giger. They will be operational, they remain to be operational. And again, because we don't have fresh airflow in the building, many of the occupants appreciate sometimes having that that ability.
I know we were downstairs having lunch one day and I tried to open some windows to get some fresh air and it's impossible. They're all stuck, every one of them.
With that being said, the the cladding does play a part in that. As as we're seeing failure on lentils above windows, it it is actually putting pressure on the window frame itself, which is resulting in advanced deterioration of those window frames. So that's a part and parcel to why we we've, you know, made considerations for both the cladding and windows at the same time.
Go ahead, Counselor Giger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to say thank you to staff for the numbers provided because it it does put it in context when the revenue, which I agree, I think vacancy rates is pretty pretty secure over the over time. And considering we do need a place, no matter where we go, the county needs offices. So when you take that into account, the amortization and the revenue, we're pretty close to breaking even. And even with maintenance costs decreasing for a little while, I was a little bit disappointed to see that the energy savings, even with all of that work in dollar amounts, it seems like an actual energy consumption will go down quite a bit. But the energy savings, I was so I was surprised and a bit disappointed. But overall, to me, the numbers add up. And really, it's the windows that is the main cost. Like the cladding we were discussing earlier is one point eight of the five. Seems like the most substantial, but yeah, so good job on providing all those options and the and all the numbers and making it easy to compare. But I I don't know if you have a comment about the energy savings costs and why is it not a little bit higher?
Yeah, so with the energy savings, since the you're gonna have to look at the building as a whole, including your HVAC, right? So with these numbers, we did a base case with the existing wall system and the and the existing windows. From there, we had inputted the new or the proposed systems. From those proposed systems, that's kind of where you get that variance in the energy consumption. So and then once you get that that change in energy, you could put that to a dollar figure. So it doesn't look as glamorous as as maybe you'd think. Just because you're not, you know, with your HVAC systems, you're not doing the roof. You're not you're not doing any of that. You're just looking at the the wall system itself. So that's kind of where the the majority of the energy would come from.
Through you, Mr. Warden. I want to bring up this page right here. This we've we went through many different options for the exterior and the presentation goes through that. And to talk about the energy savings, we are going for the cheapest option, but it does not have the energy savings that we would expect. And that's partly because we're leaving the brick intact and not putting in insulation. And partly for because we're doing that is during the last elevator addition, we had many, we had probably approximately fifty-five thousand dollars in extras in brick removal because it wasn't, they didn't see it or forecast it. So to prevent the further like stretch additional costing on the on this project, if we leave the brick intact, just cover it, we will sacrifice the energy savings, but it'll obviously bring down the initial cost and we won't have all the costing for it. And if you look at the thing on the on the bottom of this page here, it actually that one on the last title is cost per year based upon the life cycle. And you'll you'll see that on the option three C is the one on the far right. And the the ACP leaving the brick intact, it's approximately forty-five thousand dollars per year for that. And that's kind of why we've chose this option.
Any further questions? Counselor Whitner.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Just a question. I noticed the conceptual drawings, the color's quite dark on some of the aluminum and around the windows too. I'm not a big fan of the dark color stuff because it make it retains a lot of heat. Whenever it is expanding, contracting, bending, contracting. We want something lighter. It would get rid of a lot of that and probably around the windows would be better because there would be less movement around the windows and probably less failure. But that's my opinion of what I've seen in life, going out in the parking lot on a hot summer day. You can touch a white car, you can't touch a black one. So I'd just like to see that noted, please, if we can.
Counselor Sloan.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. I just want to follow up here. So we've got it budgeted or for this quote is five million dollars. In fact, I think it's five million and three thousand dollars. It's in the budget for five point three. Okay, so I get five plus HSD is five point six five. So I don't know how that comes to be. And second of all, can you just reconfirm here, Peter, that there is no HVAC contemplation of any changes in the HVAC system of this building that falls under the sixteen million dollars that we're planning and spending? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. The budget estimate numbers have to be developed by staff well in advance of the budget. And so the five point three million dollars was was an estimate for the budget. And now that we've completed a a better estimate, this is still an estimate, the five million dollars, by the way, because we haven't gone through detailed design or received tenders and see what the market's pricing the project at. So that hopefully explains the the rationale as to why the budget says five point three and why the project estimate at this point is five million dollars. As far as HVAC replacements, there is no significant major overhaul change with the HVAC systems within the building. However, there's an ongoing annual cost for maintenance and replacement of units.
Through you, Mr. Warden. The next major item that has to be replaced for HVAC systems will be your boilers. Our boilers, I believe, are they're a nineteen eighty-five vintage. So they're getting quite old. The efficiency on them is quite low. So we'll probably be looking to replace those. So we'll probably be looking to replace those, I think, I believe in the next five to ten years. Um, for the heat pumps that you'll find throughout the offices, so every office has a heat pump in it. We, we don't actually bring those up in our B C A. We replace them as required, because we have so many of them. It's not cost effective. We don't repair them. We basically just purchase new and install.
Thank you.
Anything further on this part, the windows?
Is one question we were kind of expecting was with the, uh, the tariffs. Uh, one thing that we can do is specify Canadian, uh, made materials, just so everybody knows that.
There, there's several window manufacturers in the local area that can probably supply what you're asking for, so. That's good.
That's windows and, and cladding options as well are also, uh, available at local source.
Any other questions at this time? Counselors, uh, Noble.
Through you, Warden. Um, can somebody remind me what our cost would be if we just maintained things the way they are for now? I'm just curious, because I, like, I know we've done a fair amount of brick repair work and windows, I'm sure need to get fixed every once in a while. What's our, what's our cost just to maintain what we have?
I don't know if I can really answer that as a question. The, the windows are unoperable in some locations due to the lintels, um, pushing down on them. So to, if you want functioning windows and and a working building, this is what we need to do. The windows are, uh, nineteen eighty-five or nineteen eighty-six vintage. In the selection of those windows, if they would have chose a window similar to this style with an open casement, double pane back then, we could have just replaced glazing. But because of the window style that was chose back then, with the double windows, we have, we're constantly doing maintenance on them. So I don't think I could put a number beside that. It's either the wind, if we go with the project, we can have operable windows in every location. Or we live with what we have.
So would that not be similar, like replacing the windows if we had some that were failing? Would that not be similar to our, um, heat pumps that we replace as we need to replace those? Would that not just kind of fall into that same category for, for just maintaining what we have for now? And, and knowing what those costs may be for the next year or two, instead of spending the five million dollars? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden, and, and Stefano may have something to add to this. As noted in the presentation, the lintels have exhibited rust jacking tremendously, and, and that's pushing down on the windows and causing many of them to be inoperative. So to replace the windows is going to recur, you know, require significant more work than popping out a window and putting it back in.
Yeah, to add to that, uh, with, uh, failure of your window frames, uh, comes an exponential deterioration of your glazing units as well. Uh, so with pressure forming on the edges of that glazing unit, uh, the seals will break, uh, reducing both thermal efficiency and, uh, performance of that window unit.
Go ahead.
Through you, Warden, but I'm assuming that it's not every window in the building, just like it's not every heat pump in the building. It's just, you know, it's however many, but it's not everyone. I guess that's what I'm looking at. Thank you.
So, so I guess from, from my perspective, these windows are forty years old. So the seals are at the end of their life cycle for the thermal pains. So once one starts to go, it's just bang, bang, bang after the next, especially on the south side, which gets more sun. Um, it doesn't seem feasible to just go here or there willy nilly and just put, we'd have a window firm here all, pretty much all the time replacing windows and it seems to do, and you're gonna do it, do it right, do it once and get it over with. And then when these windows fail at the next forty year cycle and everything else starts to, maybe that, that at that point, we're building a new building, which we should have been done ten years ago, but that's hindsight, so. Um, you know, that's, that's just my opinion, seeing, leading in construction in the industry for many, many years. At some point you have to bite the bullet and just do it right.
You, you also see, uh, a significant economy of scale, uh, if you're doing multiple windows, uh, rather than one at a time. Uh, manufacturing processes would be, uh, drastically reducing costs, uh, just because they'd be a repetitive, uh, manufacturing process, uh, as well as the installation costs, uh, mobilization costs, uh, they, they all form part in, uh, in what our estimates is.
I'm sorry, Counsel Hans.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Um, when you stand back and look at this building, it's quite impressive. We don't see the issues that you've just raised. So I thank you for these pictures. And from my experience, you, you see some of the, some of the damage, some of the weather and water getting in. And if we were to take a picture next year, it's that much worse. Then we take a picture in five years, it's a whole lot worse. So it doesn't just gradually, we're to the point now where I think we're going to see more and more damage exponentially on this type of structure. We have a huge asset here the county owns. Uh, seventy-seven thousand square feet. My experience, when you own an asset, there's, you gotta pay the bill once in a while. And I think we're long overdue in dealing with this problem and I'd hate to see it go any further. So, um, I think we have to, um, bite the bullet on this and maintain this beautiful building.
You can also, sorry to interrupt, but you can also make an example of the property across the street. Um, built, uh, in the same vintage, uh, same construction methods, uh, actually same materials. Uh, they're, they're in a point right now where they are failing exponentially. Uh, and, uh, it's with, with lower maintenance, uh, the deterioration, uh, is, is very apparent over the, over the years.
Follow up. There, there's three choices here and, and I struggle to wrap my head around it. So are, are we going to make the decision as a council or we're looking for staff recommendations on option one, two, or three?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Hans. The, the presented options contemplated, uh, everything you saw in that report. And the only option that doesn't require removing the outside layer of brick is the overcladding with aluminum panels. And for the other various op, uh, rationale in, in the report, number one being the lowest life cycle cost, uh, the options presented for the, uh, aluminum clad panels, the aluminum double glazed windows and the hollow metal doors is what's recommended by the consultant and supported by staff and is presented to council for their support. So we can now proceed with detailed design.
Thank you.
Any further questions? There's no further questions. Peter, anything to add, uh, at this time or?
Just one final thought, uh, when we heard about the potential color options, because if council does support the aluminum clad panels, there are color variations. Um, personally, I quite like what was presented. It does modernize the building, the look and feel. Um, we left it up to the, the consultant to, to come up with that plan. And I thought they did a very admirable job and something that looks very attractive and, and uses some different colors to, to break up the different shapes in the building. However, if council has some preference as to maintaining the same color or going to a lighter color or different options for color, that, that is, that is up to council.
Something doesn't have to be decided today though, does it? I, I don't assume that the color of the panels at this point changed the price, that whether, whatever option you go with as far as the color.
Uh, no, that wouldn't, that wouldn't really have a, a bearing on the, on the cost of it, uh, the selection of color. Like, we do have the renderings, uh, created, so it's a fairly easy process. If you did want to change the color, we can, we can do that to give you some more ideas there.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no further questions? Catherine, you have resolution?
Resolved that the report titled Administration Building Exterior Renovation Options Present Presentation from the Director of Engineering Services dated February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five be received and filed and that staff be directed to proceed with the Administration Building Exterior Renovation Project and incorporating the recommended construction material options as recommended in the report presentation.
Thank you. Mover and secretary, please. Counselors Jiguer, Counselor Hans, any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Do opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Counsel, slow.
We taking a break? I didn't know.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, welcome back. We'll move down to item six four, Director of Financial Services, uh, and Treasurer, twenty-twenty-five Proposed County Budget.
Sorry, can I, may I, Warden? I just wondered if I could ask for consideration of my notice of motion in advance of the budget, as it pertains to the budget. Um, as you can see, I asked for a couple of issues with respect to transparency and wondered if the council would consider debating that at this time.
It was council's pleasure. Obviously, when we go down to notice a motion, it's too late, so. Need the deal, deal with it now, wait till Jen's done her presentation, deal with it at that point before we make any further deliberation. I prefer rather listen to Jen's presentation than deal with that before we make a final decision. That's okay?
Um, I think it'll be moot, but at that point, but I'll defer to the group.
Okay, well, yeah, we, we can deal with it now. That's, uh, council's pleasure. Yeah, might as well read it, please, then.
Forty-nine point eight million, amounting to a tax rate increase of one point four nine percent. Whereas the County of Elgin provided the proposed twenty-twenty-five budget information to the Finance Committee on January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-five, including detailed departmental information without a clear consolidated financial picture of the county's finances. Whereas the reserve balances contained within the twenty-twenty-five proposed budget documents are for the twenty-twenty-three year and does not contain forecasted twenty-twenty-four projections. Now therefore be it resolved that staff be requested to provide the overall forecasted surplus or deficit for twenty-twenty-four year and updated reserve balances to council before making a final decision regarding the twenty-twenty-five proposed budget.
Thank you. We have a mover and secretary, please. Uh, Council Athem, are you, are you moving? Okay. Secondary, Counsel Noble. Uh, discussion, go ahead.
If I may, thank you and thank you, uh, to the, to the finance team for putting through the budget and the work that they've done. Um, my interest in having some consolidated statements showing revenue expenses or the date when they would be available, um, I think is important. Um, it's what I'm used to and I think what a lot of municipalities, uh, provide their rate payer. Um, there were times when I found the, uh, presentation to be, um, harder for me to understand. Um, if we look at things like, uh, the total of full-time employees and what the costs are, um, there's often variances that are done in budgets such as this, so that we're shown if it's over or under, let's say fifty thousand dollars. So if we had a schedule which supported the staffing changes, at least to include the budgeted full-time employees and the department schedules. So, um, I'm just asking for supporting schedules for both debt and reserves and a date for when we'd have the information at the, at the majority. And I know there's a lot of work done at year end, but the majority of groups would have, um, information compiled by the end of Q one. And I think that's a reasonable, uh, uh, a date, if that would be something council would consider. So for me, it's just to have a clear consolidated financial picture and I thank the council for its time.
Questions or comments? If not, we have a motion on the floor, all the vote, all in favor? Opposed? Motion's defeated.
Thank you, Warden.
Okay, Jen, uh, the floor is yours, please.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. Um, well, I have a PowerPoint presentation to accompany the, um, information that was presented today. So Appendix A, um, included in your budget package is the twenty-twenty-five Proposed Business Plan and Budget that was compiled using excerpts from our committee presentations to date, which has been posted on our website for public information. Further information at the last, uh, Finance Committee meeting was requested related to value for service and considerations related to impacts that have been made, um, to our twenty-twenty-five business plan as a review and beyond. And appendix B outlines the proposed budget bylaw populated with the proposed twenty-twenty-five ratios and rates for the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year. Appendix C is the borrowing bylaw that is annually approved by council for the purposes of temporary borrowing throughout the year as needed. Appendix D includes the PowerPoint presentation that you're seeing today. And Appendix E includes, uh, summarized public comments received between February twelfth and noon on February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Next slide. Um, the budget process so far, um, the committee had members requested open houses to be prepared in advance, uh, the twenty-twenty-five budget. So a video and materials were compiled in preparation based on the twenty-twenty-four budget materials. And open houses were conducted November twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, um, in twenty-twenty-four at various locations across the county. The committee first received the budget documents related to department incentives on January twenty-eighth. And this presentation was required to be continued at another time and was completed at the Finance Committee on February fourth. On February, um, at that time, committee had asked for more information related to some of the incentives that were presented at that time. And on February eleventh, staff presented more details for council's information. Committee requested further consultation on the budget from the public. And a consolidation of information was created from our presentations and posted online, as mentioned, from February twelfth to February twentieth and presented in a, as Appendix, Appendix A. The committee recommended that the budget bylaw then be presented at council for, uh, including the rates and ratios. And we're here today to discuss that. So next will be a discussion about the value for service and the impacts on the future budget plan. So staff, uh, reviewed, um, the budget and during the time of their budget review, there was several considerations that they looked at. These can be put into different categories. So we tried to categorize them, um, as we had reviewed. So user pay revenue was one of the areas that we looked at. Service delivery, monitoring, funding and investing in our future were some of the, um, areas that we are, we considered during our budget review. Next slide. First one is user pay revenue. So we looked at commercial market lease analysis and we are planning to do a commercial market lease analysis along with a space needs study to anticipate and justify an increase in rental rates for tenants and, and also increase our revenue. White station, we're looking at, um, county land asset that will be appraised for potential divestment or an increase in revenue as determined by county council. A road bridge rationalization study, uh, the transportation master plan will study jurisdictional appropriateness of assets with potential for divesting or downloading these assets to reduce current and future costs. And that's approximately done every five years. We'll be doing a shared services review and reviewing shared services with our local municipal partners to ensure equalized compensation for shared services and that we have in-house items that are value added. Um, the homes, terrace lodge semi-private rates will be grandfathered to private rates over time. Uh, increase in housekeeping and maintenance hours and adding hours to cover the costs, because there's an additional footprint, but it will be offset with some of these additional revenues that we will be expecting to be brought in. And then planning, we have an increase in our planning fees that will be expected over the course of the next few years. There any questions on that slide? Next. The next one is our service delivery. This one had several areas. So the first one was for senior policy planner. We had thought we were going to get a, a delay in the hiring of the senior policy planner until onboarding for, from local municipal partners to streamline and centralize planning services for the community. And this will help to keep the department aligned with user demand, so that person was delayed in their hiring. As a result of that, a GIS student will be hired for four months in engineering to assist in corporate demand across planning and management and LMP requests and in lieu of hiring this full-time employee. This is a solution that offers additional capacity and value as anticipated planning needs increase and more capacity is required. Vehicle replacement. Based on past practice, the library van was scheduled for replacement every five years, and then it was used by tourism. And now we do have a tourism vehicle, so we don't have to do that replacement every five years. And so we're reviewing this vehicle annually to determine whether or not it needs to be replaced. Current review of repairs and maintenance allows us to defer that until the year twenty-six or twenty-seven. And the van is a 2019 van with approximately a hundred and ninety thousand kilometers on it. Approximately five percent depreciation in the Canadian dollar between 2024 and 2025 decreased the buying power of electronic resources and the library system. And periodicals, most of these are purchased through the US and they're managed within budget parameters. So we're absorbing that cost currently to sustain service levels will become challenging as that changes and that landscape becomes a little more challenging. We went fine free for our library, phase two revenue reduction absorbed into the department costs as well. And use of donations is helping to offset some of these pressures. Additionally, an increase in costs of programming is offset by the use of donations. And the effects of tariffs are unknown at this time, so we did not put anything in the budget for that. We didn't build that in. But we will continue to monitor that, and if there is some further assistance that's required, we'll try to mitigate those costs throughout the year as we go. Next. Within our budget, we also manage the CPI, so two percent over October. Most of our contracts are based on the CPI, so that funding is built in, and we have the potential offset equal to approximately five hundred and sixty thousand as the impact. In-house publications, we're utilizing in-house resources and earned free media instead of paid promotions. Graphic design is done by current communications person, and external advertising costs are not containable and are managed by each department budget. So it's not part of the budget for admin services. It's part of the budget by the department who's requesting the work to be done. Investment in technology. This is our engineering department. They're looked at work that needs to be done in order to improve the design of the current system and determined that a cloud-based solution was more manageable. And they're migrating over to this cloud-based solution, which will reduce administration of permits, improve user experience, and more effectively deliver this service to the end user. Development of the transportation asset needs and capital plan. Transportation and other capital assets are fully managed in-house. The development of the capital investment plan by staff in-house reduces the need for external consultants by capitalizing on existing corporate knowledge. More sophisticated levels of analysis are outsourced, and that's due to their complexity and the capacity internally. And at last, the roads need study was completed by a consultant at about a hundred thousand dollars, so that's why we use that number. Corporate needs are fully managed, corporate assets are fully managed in-house. The development of the corporate asset management plan by staff reduces the need for external consultants and capitalizes on existing corporate knowledge base as well. Prior studies completed by an consultant cost a hundred thousand, so that's when we leaned on that number again. And this study will be required every five years and is part of our funding requirement from the ministry, so we do have to do this. Visitor guide, the cost of printing, this has dramatically increased over the past ten years. In 2012, the tourism, tourism printed fifty thousand visitor guides for twenty-one thousand dollars. In 2019, twenty-five thousand guides were ten thousand dollars, and five thousand guides were eight thousand dollars. And so we're printing fewer materials, but we're focusing more on digital advertising, including the new tourism website and social media. And tourism used to distribute the visitor guide across the province using travel centers, hotels, and on routes. And the cost to distribute the guides in twenty-three was eight thousand dollars, which thus, so that's discontinued. Wayfinding signage program. So a review of this program identified that the signs that we had out in the community for our tourism was at end of life and required a much-needed refresh and replacement. Over the course of this program, Elgin had not broken even, and further challenges existed related to monitoring removal of signs due to businesses turnover and annual unpaid fees. Additionally, two hundred signs caused roadside clutter that competed with other required road signage. And after a review, it was determined that this signage program was viable, was not viable, was viable upon its inception. But now the audience, you know, ten years later, fourteen years later, has changed, and people are more reliant on readily available social media, online portals, and GIS mapping. And so we, that indicated a more modernized direction that was available, that better aligned with this service. New grants program. In addition to the sponsorship program that's now online, we have the grants program, and one half of one percent of the prior year levy is going to, is being used towards that. Social services, we increased costs as our municipal partner with the City of St. Thomas by thirty-five thousand. Southwest Public Health, increase of the levy on the county from Southwest Public Health Unit, which is a shared service with the County of Oxford, the City of St. Thomas, and the Ministry of Health. And information technology, ten-year asset management plan outlines two cycles of equipment exchange, with the lifecycle being approximately five years on IT equipment. Some of the existing equipment is now more than ten years old and due to non-investment in previous years. This, this is a problem because there's slower productivity and age of equipment requires more maintenance, causes more downtime and user frustration. An increase to rely on technology and modernization throughout the county requires investment in either hardware, software, or cloud-based applications, which is not possible using outdated technology that can no longer accommodate new programs. The necessary continuous management cycle of this service requires policy, prudent planning, and service provider oversight to maximize investment. The next one, we're monitor funding. So I, council heard about the fragmities funding, so staff have applied for ongoing funding to treat fragmities on county roads throughout the ministry, through the Ministry of Natural Resources. If we're successful, the funding is valued at forty-seven thousand, and it is not currently in the budget. As the planned outcomes of whether we're successful with that application are not known at this time. Housing funding, housing enabling fund for Fengal Reconstruction. Staff have applied for funding through the province's housing enabling fund, and is successful. This will be valued up to three point five million and for future year project in 2026. So this does not affect the 2025 budget, but will have potential impact on the 2026 budget. The homes maximizing funding opportunities for one-time operational funding to help relieve financial pressures and key priorities. They get one-time funding generally every year that the province will have an initiative that they're to be doing, and so they will maximize that in order to get that funding spent and used up and, and improve the value of, of our residents' lives in the homes. Increase in the per diem for funding related to the case mix index and direct hours of cares. Case mix index is related to the type of resident and how much care that they require. So it's important for us to ensure that we're documenting and getting our maximum amount of funding. Homes, education lean and coordinator role position was a value-added service to support recruitment and retention initiatives, mandatory education, and legislative compliance. These costs are fully supported through provincial funding. The nurse practitioner role is one time, is one full-time equivalent across the three long-term care homes, so it'd be a shared position. It's value-added service to support resident care and services, medical and nursing. This one is also fully funded through hiring more nurses, nurse practitioners in long-term care funding program, and the funding covers the full cost of the hire. The implementation of technology, software, hardware, and training to improve resident care and services supported through integrated technology solution funding and one-time funding, except for dietary department hardware. So they will require hardware from the IT department, but they do not require the fund, the amount of money that will, to run the programming. Investment in our future. So council was instrumental in making decision on the Terrace Lodge debt reduction. So that impacts twenty-five years. We'll have seven hundred and seventy-three thousand that we're not spending on interest costs over the next twenty-five years. And that's relative to that decision. Development charges study, we're planning to take a development charges study out again this year. And if implemented, there's a five-year phase-in period for that, which delays the full impact of the effects of that program. So it is important, if we're going to do it, to get it going and making sure that we're fully optimizing the ability to realize revenue on that. Once we get it up and running, we expect to see about eight hundred thousand dollars worth of revenue coming in. So that would be beneficial to future years. So the next one is our growth reserve, so we are planning to be successful in, in this, and we're going to have prudent reserve management. So the growth of the county will require new investment in tangible capital asset. And this future invest, investment will require significant upfront planning and financial resources. These costs are better paid for with the growth-related revenue, and council recently heard about bike lanes, which currently do not exist. We know that the investment will not be limited to just bike lanes, so council has agreed to set aside the current growth in anticipation of the need for a reserve for this purpose. The growth reserve will be used to mitigate a spike in the levy or a need for debt in the future. So 2026 and 2027, we'll see a use of the capital reserve required that we have. And currently in 2023, at the end of that year, the growth reserve sat at five million dollars and is available for future growth needs. Increased efficiency with modernized technology. We have done some replacement of light fixtures, fluorescent lights at Bobbierville, Elgin Manor, and Terrace Lodge. We're replaced with LEDs. We've replaced rooftop units, HVAC units, Elgin Manor kitchen makeup air unit and replacement boiler, where, will help improve efficiency by about twenty-five percent. Spartan Line resurfacing, a section of Spartan Line was scheduled to be, to receive a new asphalt-wearing surface, and this project was deferred due to potential planning servicing by the municipality that owns that road, and so, under that road, I guess. And so then we will defer our investment to make sure that we're not putting asphalt on a road that might be torn up. So we're just delaying that, but we will still need to make that investment in the future. And then council just heard about the window replacement of facade. There's no debt to manage this value-add improvement, and it is within our lifecycle improvement, and will extend the life of this asset for another forty years. And also will help maintain the assets that we have already put into it over the last five years. So it just sort of helps insulate that investment. I don't know if there's a, going to pause at this point and have some questions or?
Yeah, Counselor Sloan.
Sure. Thanks, Warden. Through you to Ms. Ford. And I, I don't understand when it says council recently heard about bike lanes, which currently do not exist. So we have bike lanes in Elgin County. So, so I don't understand. Maybe I'm not understanding, so again.
Through you, Mr. Warden, and Counselor Sloan. You're correct, Counselor Sloan, that, that's, that's not presented accurately. This is the development of the county's cycle master plan, which contemplates additional cycling facilities. That would be new assets. You're absolutely right. We have a great cycle network right now. It only extends from St. Thomas around Dexter Line, then, then up to Almer. There's a couple paved shoulders connecting some communities in West Elgin as well. That's the extent of, of the cycling lane infrastructure on county roads. Through the development of the TMP will be, council will be presented and contemplate a more fulsome cycling master plan that will contemplate new and additional assets that are not currently included in the ten-year capital plan.
Thank you. Sorry for, for pointing something out that, again, I just don't understand it, so my apologies to council.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Warden. Do we know the percentage of the, the population that uses the cycle lanes, the cycling lanes? Just curious.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. The cycling lanes I mentioned that were constructed in West Elgin actually form part of provincial funding, and they were shown on a plan developed by the health unit at the time, and that made us eligible for funding. And that's why they're there in advance of maybe some other ones. The reason I say all that is part of that funding program mandated that we collect data for cycling so that they could see how many users use these facilities. That's very difficult to obtain unless you have somebody physically out there counting cyclists. I can only speak from experience. I'm an avid user of what council has invested in Sunset Road. On a, a nice summer day, you can expect hundreds of cyclists. Now, percentage of where those cyclists eminent from, your guess is as good as mine. I would, I would hesitate to suggest many come from the City of St. Thomas, but not exclusively.
Counsel Jager, pardon me, Counselor Jager.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and just to clarify, endorsing the budget today doesn't mean we endorse a cycling plan. I think there were some very good comments made at our last meeting about being careful about what population we want to serve and, and what exactly do we need to maximize the benefit to as many constituents. So I'm expecting many more discussions on that. Thank you.
Think you can continue on, Jen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Next slide. So we're looking about, looking at some fast facts about revenue totals. We do have a hundred and eight million dollars, and thirty-four percent of this revenue is derived from federal provincial funding sources in 2025. In 2024, that number was thirty-two point three percent, so that's a one point eight percent increase year over year. Twenty percent of that revenue is generated through user fees, so twenty point two percent. And that is down a little bit from 2024, so twenty point four percent of revenue was generated in 2024 from user fees. And revenue generated from property tax is down one point six percent from 2024 to forty-five point eight percent from forty-five, forty-seven point four percent. And that's basically because the ministry is picking up a little bit of that share, so. Next slide. I just wanted to explain that overall, the ministry picks up approximately sixty to sixty-five percent of the cost of homes funding. So we are trying, that is within the sixtieth percentile of the cost. So we are trying, that is within the sixtieth percentile of the cost of the homes. In the homes operating fund, there is. Eighteen to twenty percent of our homes residents fund their stay at our homes. Sixty to sixty five percent of that is funded by the provincial government and the municipality picks up seventeen to twenty percent. And just for comparison, the capital project Terrace Lodge rebuild, sixty three percent of the cost of that. Over the course of the twenty five years will be picked up by the ministry. So that's a delayed reaction. And then in the municipal side, we are picking up thirty seven percent. And that does include the six million dollars I factored in that interest so that we would have the, the correct amount there. So wages and benefits.
Jen, question, Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. So when I go back to our proposed budget for twenty twenty five, the, the first one we had for the first finance meeting. When I look at the homes, there was, there was a bunch of savings. When I look at the actuals and I compare them to the budgeted of twenty twenty four. Like we had a savings of, if I'm understanding this correctly. For, for Bobbierville Villa, we had a savings of four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Because our revenue was higher and and our other costs were lower. But we also budgeted to have an expense of about half a million dollars. And then you go down to Algen Manor, same thing, you're almost seven hundred thousand dollars of, of. Coming ahead comparing the revenue and the wages to the, to the expense. That was just right, right around nine hundred thousand dollars. And then we come to Terrace Lodge, same thing. Five hundred and forty four thousand dollar savings. We had a nine hundred and forty three thousand dollar expense on the budget side. So when I add all those up, that works out to about four point one million dollars. Am I understanding that correctly?
I don't have those numbers in front of me, so I'm not really sure what you're referencing as far as that goes, but.
Microphone. I'm looking at the budgeted, comparing it to our actuals for twenty twenty four. It, it looks like we come ahead four point one million dollars there. So as we're going through the budget today, I'm just curious what, what our plan is for that four point one million dollars. Because ideally that's money that we're ahead from actual to budgeted. I'm happy to show you my computer. I have it up, but it's, it's the budgeted paperwork. And I'm on page thirty nine.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Through you, Mr. Warden to Counselor Noble. Those were actuals to a certain date, like we didn't have all of the information in there for you. So there wasn't a forecasted number there.
So that, that would be like the ten, ten months, ten months. Actuals or nine months actuals?
There were actuals on the paperwork. It's actuals to December nineteenth. So according to that, we'd have two weeks left in the, in the year. I don't think two weeks would take too much of a dent out of that, but again, I'm, I'm just asking the questions. Because to me, there's, there's a bunch of money left over and, and if, if we save some money. Then we can save our rate payers some money at the same time. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden to Counselor Noble. Those were as at. They weren't all in. So there was some payroll that was not posted during that time and there was some information that was not included. But that was what we pulled out of the system as at December nineteenth. But as I said, there is not all of the information in there and we did not have forecasted numbers. So if we had forecasted, that would have been a different number.
Thank you, Warden. And a follow up to Ms. Ford. Sorry, through the Warden to Jennifer, am I, on a, on a further note to Counselor Noble's comment? When will those numbers? When is the year end expected? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden to Counselor Sloan. I think last meeting or a couple of meetings ago, we mentioned it would be May, June.
Counselor Noble.
So could, could we? Guesstimate how much of that four million dollars we're going to use up? Before we, and, and have, have an idea of what that number might be. Be before we vote on the budget, because four million dollars there, that takes a big chunk out of that. That one point five that we're looking at an increase. Thank you.
I guess from my own perspective, that's a, not a good idea ever to guesstimate something like that. The, the, the reality is any. Money that is left over goes back in reserves. It doesn't disappear into infinity. Counselor Noble.
Through you, Warden. But we're, we're basing our budget on not full numbers. So I, I'm not saying guesstimate, but, but the whole budget process, we're basing it on the numbers that we were given. So. That's, that part's kind of important, right?
And, and I guess for my twenty one years of experience. That's every budget I've been involved with at the municipal level is based on an estimate. Because of the way we are prescribed to do our business by the province. And that's, that's the reality. It's not like a private business. Counselor Giger.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I also want to double check because I know at the first meeting, we were provided a set of tables. That I think council agreed there was some, it was difficult to interpret. And the follow up meeting, so I guess our last February eleventh meeting, there was another table provided. And. That provided much more clarity and not the, the sort of predicted surplus. So I would refer back to the, the slide that was provided, I think it was under question number two. Home, homes, wages and benefits. Because that was a more up to date and easier to interpret and. The, the, sorry, the, the slide that Counselor Noble is, is looking at is from our first meeting. And we did ask questions about that slide because it was. Difficult to read. So I would personally refer to what was provided on February eleventh. Under question two, where clarity was provided. And to me anyway, that answered a lot of questions because at the first meeting, it did seem like a huge surplus. The, but I think it was based on the way it was presented. So. Just wanted to clarify that because I, I think there was an attempt from staff from meeting one to meeting two to address your concern.
Go ahead.
I, I'm going to look up that, but just for clarification, I believe that was only, that conversation and that other slide. Was only about the wages because I had brought up the wages during the meeting. And we were all, all those homes, if we looked at the actuals, and that was my first question. Was the actuals from twenty twenty four to the proposed budgeted for twenty twenty five was an increase of five million dollars? For, for all three homes put together. So that was what I questioned the first time. And I believe that that second paperwork clarified that there is some kind of a confusion. In the budgeted numbers for twenty twenty five. But in this point, the actuals for twenty four and the budgeted for twenty four is what I'm, I'm questioning today. So I, I know there was clarification that came out from, from that second budgeted. Meeting, but, but this, I'm, I'm just comparing the actuals and the budgeted for twenty four. I, 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 I know they've, they've, they've worked that out. Because the, like I say, that was an increase of five million bucks.
Go ahead, Jen.
Through you, Mr. Warden to Counselors Noble and Sloan. We did re, re, include the revised budgets for the homes in that slide. Further down, if you actually look, there is a forecasted year end number for twenty twenty four for the homes. So there isn't anticipated to be a four million dollar surplus.
Go ahead.
Through you, Warden. What, what is the anticipated savings?
I don't have that number at this time.
Hey Jen, if you want to continue on.
Through you, Mr. Warden to members of council. So wages and benefits. Thirty five percent of the total revenue is used to pay for wages and benefits. And seventy one percent of those wages and benefits are dedicated to care of residents in our long term care homes. Facts about the twenty twenty five operations. Forty one percent of revenue is dedicated to service delivery. Six percent of revenue supports operations within the long term care homes. Four percent of revenue is returned to local municipal partners for roads maintenance, service delivery on county roads. Fourteen percent of revenue supports ambulance services. Two percent of revenue supports the Southwest Public Health. And two percent of revenue supports social services. Thirteen percent of the remaining, which is the remaining revenue, supports other county services like libraries, et cetera. Utilities for our billings. Next slide. Capital projects, twenty four percent of the revenue is dedicated to the replacement of tangible capital assets. Which is needed to deliver services to our rate payer. So that's the remaining amount of our revenue that we collect. This year, we don't have to use any of our reserves for that purpose. And next, B is the budget bylaw. It outlines a proposed budget bylaw populated with the proposed twenty twenty five ratios and rates for the twenty twenty five fiscal year. The tax rate increase for this year is one point four nine percent. The tax rates have been adjusted up by this percentage in the rate section of the bylaw to reflect the correctly adjusted percentages by property tax class. A new ratio for aggregate extraction was introduced this year and has been added to the list at the prescribed rate by the Minister of Finance. Properties have been moved from the industrial class and it is, it is expected that they will not be subjected to educational taxes. Slide. The prior year budget bylaws have included provision for grants to the municipalities of West Elgin and Dutton Dunwich. To exempt these municipalities from paying tax on a portion of municipally owned property containing landfills. This began in twenty sixteen, when M PACT moved these properties from their previously exempt status. To a new class for the purpose of landfills in Elgin County. Staff have made provision in the twenty twenty five budget to continue this practice. The twenty twenty five departmental budgets for operating in capital have been added to the bylaw. In summary, to reflect the use of funds for the proposed budget. Appendix C outlines the borrowing bylaw that is annually approved by council for the purposes of temporary borrowings throughout the year as needed. This enables us to have blanket short term borrowings for, from our lending facility. And is in compliance with section four oh seven, section twenty five of the Municipal Act. And ensures our ability to maintain trusted working relationships with our employees, vendors and partners. And deliver critical services to our community such as long term care and ambulance. And we can lean on this in times of emergency, which we did during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Council approval of the budget bylaw and the borrowing bylaw are two pieces of documentation that our banking partner requires. In order to maintain our credit facility in good standing. Appendix F was public engagement and this was posted on our website. We'll talk about background, proposed business plan and budget document, engage Elgin, promotional materials. Survey, survey results, and then questions and comments. Background, at its meeting of February eleventh, council directed staff to engage the community in the budget process. And to seek feedback regarding the twenty twenty five proposed business plan and budget. Participatory budgeting allows the community to engage in discussions regarding the county's financial and budgetary processes. It provides a platform for public feedback on municipal financial matters such as the allocation of public resources. Prioritization of services and oversight of public spending. The twenty twenty five proposed business plan and budget document was updated this year. To enhance public understanding of the county's budgeting process and how the twenty twenty five county levy and tax rate were established. Engage Elgin is this, is our website where we have the budget and have opportunity for people to comment. The website, the webpage contains the essential information, including key dates, timeline for the budget process. And important documents such as a proposed budget. It assists the community in navigating the budget approval process and outlines what is being proposed for twenty twenty five. We had between the period of February twelfth and February twentieth, two hundred and fifty six total webpage visits. Twenty five downloads of the business document. Promotional materials were posted around the county administration building. At our local municipal partner administration buildings, posters were placed within our long term care homes. At our library branches, at the Heritage Center and at the Provincial Offenses Building. A press release was sent to twelve local media contacts on February thirteenth. My FM shared it on February fourteenth. Press release added to the county's website in the news section on February thirteenth. Shared by our local municipal partners, Facebook pages on February fourteenth. Shared with local municipal partners Economic Development Committee. Shared by an established media on Facebook. It was included in the Saint Thomas and District Chamber of Commerce Greenmail E-Newsletter. Included in the Elmeran Area Chamber of Commerce E-Newsletter. And included in the county's Economic Development and Tourism Member E-Newsletter. Hundred and ninety eight people opened the E-Newsletter and twenty one links were clicked. Promotional materials, ten posts on the county Facebook page. There was fourteen thousand two hundred and eighty three views. Seven thousand six hundred and two people were reached and with a total link clicks of thirty six. Posts on the county's linked page, LinkedIn page, total impressions was three hundred and sixty six, total clicks was sixty five. Shared by the Elgin County Heritage Center Facebook page, shared by the Elgin County Library Facebook page. And shared by the Elgin County Archives Facebook page. The question that we asked, please provide your feedback on Elgin County's twenty twenty five proposed business plan and budget. And we asked for two hundred and fifty words maximum. Twenty four online surveys were completed by fifteen individuals. And a list of comments was provided as an attachment to the council report. Recommendations are before you. I'm going to read them all. And if there is any questions or comments. Try to do that as we were going, but be to take more.
Any further questions for Jen? I know the two hundred and fifty word maximum was an issue for a few people, but. They, they, they managed.
They did leave more than one comment.
Beg pardon?
They did leave more than one comment.
Yes, they did. Any further questions for Jen? Counselor Sloan.
Thank you, Warden. Through you. Was any of the feedback considered?
It's all considered, yes.
So I guess, sorry if I made supplementary. So it's not like we acted on anything that we heard from the public.
I don't have them before me, but they're, most of them were very generic. There was some. not nice ones, but we worked through those.
Thank you. Counselor Cookett?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a general question. I noticed in the promotional materials that there's no mention of promotional materials in local newspapers. Did I miss that, or is there a policy that we don't do that?
Go ahead, Catherine.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to Counselor Cookett. At this time, because of the period being quite short, several of our local newspapers only post or publish once a week. And we would have already, after the council meeting giving us the direction, missed the deadline to appear in the newspaper. And if we would have for the next week, we would have only appeared in the newspaper for one day before the consultation period closed. So we chose, just because of the cost of that, that at that time we decided not to put in local newspaper. We did send out press releases to our local newspapers. And in the future, should our consultation period be more lengthy, we would consider that.
Any further questions? Counselor Ziegert?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. So I I will say that I, in in reference to earlier comments, that of course, it's not the, all the documentation and that's provided, it's not perfect. There's always room for improvement, so I'm I trust that we are on that path. And there were several comments made by the Finance Committee. And I think we're well received by staff, so I trust that we'll continue on that path to improve the clarity of the of the numbers and the transparency. So having said that, I don't like to make assumptions. So I would want to make sure that as part of the recommendation, and whether we need to, I'm not sure if we need to add this in the resolution, but that the Finance Committee will meet regularly to receive regular reports on on financial performance. And I think it was mentioned already that we we are expecting an update on the, and a review of the shared services, a review, an update on the POA agreement, IT spending benchmarking, and metrics to demonstrate value. I think we all agreed on that. And and an update, an update on the reserves. Because I I agree, we need a fuller picture of the reserves. And I also want to confirm with staff that I think by July, we will receive a fully costed asset management plan. Which I'm wondering if that will, because I think that's the deadline to provide an asset management plan that shows the full funding strategy. And I'm wondering if that could coincide with a mapping of the the reserves and the plans that we have. To, because most of the time, a lot of the reserves that we have are linked to asset management plans. And then, so we save, 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 and then deplete and then replenish. So I'm, I really am looking for that picture because we are missing it right now. But I feel that we have sufficient information to pass a budget, keeping in mind that it's a budget. And that means that we can adjust during the year as additional information will be provided.
Go ahead, Blaine.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Warden, to members of of council. A lot of thoughts, Counselor Ziegert, so I will try and and stay as concise as I can. But with respect to the reporting, so my philosophy on reporting is is I guess there's a couple of parts to it. With respect to the Finance Committee, one of the reasons why I I recommended to council that the Budget Committee evolved to more of a Finance Committee is to get more inconsistent and more frequent involvement from council's oversight, which with respect to the long-range financial planning of of the county. So yes, there will be more frequent report reporting to the Finance Committee. The way I look at it is external reporting, and when I say external, I mean to council and the community would be on a quarterly basis. Internal reporting, which is more management-based, is on a monthly basis. And and the reason why I deciphered between the two is that the external reporting, it it takes a little longer to pull together. It's a little less raw, if you will, where the management reporting is. Well, not as attractive to look at, but more effective with respect to the management of the organization. Having said that, and and Ward and I had this chat actually this morning, that should I see something in the monthly reports that that doesn't quite sit well with me? You can be, rest assured that I will bring that to the Finance Committee and we'll have a discussion with that. Notwithstanding that might be not actually lined up with a quarterly report, I will bring that to your attention. That's part of what I view my my role is here, is to make sure that you are well aware of everything that's going on frequently. With respect to the types of reporting you'll see. So I've spoken to council in the past with respect to financial reporting and performance reporting. Financial reporting is generally easier to get, although our Finance Committee may not agree with me at this point. Once our our Questica system is up and running, fully implemented, the next steps would be to have our departments calendarize all their budgets, so A, you have a baseline to report against. And then that system can be used for more regular reporting from the financial perspective. The connection, the performance side of reporting takes a little longer to address because that's really starting to understand the the services you provide, the levels you provide them at. But we'll get there. So between those two components, the financial reporting and the performance reporting, the link between the two is valued. Right? So if we just looked at financial reporting, we're really just speaking about costs and revenues, may not mean a lot to some. When we start to actually tie the connection to the level of service that we're providing to the community, that's when council can look at it and think, okay, we are providing good value, or where do we need to improve? And we can have those more fulsome discussions once we see that that connection between the two. So that that's where we're headed. This year, we'll see a a series of evolutions taking that. Our our new financial system is sort of in the the last leg of being fully implemented. So once we can work through the remainder of the discussion on the budget, then we'll turn our minds back to finalizing that and getting that sort of baseline reporting in front of the Finance Committee. So I'm anticipating, I'd like to see that around mid-year or so, if not earlier, but certainly by mid-year so that we can start to talk about, okay, you know, now that's in place. What does the rest of of the year start to look like? I think I answered most of your questions, but if I missed something. Reserves, thank you. So one thing that that I'd like to see is the benefit of of doing that financial reporting is then starting to incorporate more accurate forecasting throughout the year. So when we bring our quarterly reports, there will not only be a forecasted amount for the next quarter, but there will be an anticipated year-end forecast as well. So when council is considering the two thousand and twenty-six business plan and budget will be this year. If any of you miss talking about budget, you get to do too this year. Because what I've mentioned to council before, we will start to back up the timing of the business plan and budget so that it's done by the end of the year. You should be having in your hands more accurate forecasting when you're considering that budget in that sort of last quarter. You'll have, you should actually have third quarter actuals and a year-end forecast. Right? So and with that, we, what I'm used to in my past is in the business plan, having very specific schedules that speak to the anticipated or forecasted reserve balance of the current year, the impact of the business plan that council is being asked to consider on the reserves, and therefore then the anticipated forecast reserve balance at the end of the following year. That's what I'm accustomed to to developing, and that's where we'll go here.
Just a quick follow-up on that. So I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to to those numbers. Can we also look forward to a long-term forecast, like a ten to twenty-five year forecast? So that we can see why certain reserves, because when you look at an annual basis, they may seem extremely high, but that's because you can't see that ten years from now. You're trying to mitigate a huge spike and you'll be depleting almost seventy-five percent. So I'm hoping we're heading towards both types, short term and long term.
Thank you, Counselor Ziegert. That was the last part that I forgot. So one thing that if council recalls that I've spoken to council in the past about is a long-range financial planning tool. That I view as the repository to bring all those various elements together. So you mentioned the asset management plan is what really drives our replacement funding levels. And so, as you know, county owns hundreds of millions of dollars worth of assets. The asset management plan lays out a plan as to what to address, when do, when best to address it and how best to address it. So various different types of lifecycle activities fall or are more valuable in certain windows. So that's what your asset management plan does. The project that Peter and his team, in conjunction with Jennifer and her team, will be starting quite soon, actually, is the project that you mentioned a little bit ago with respect to establishing those levels of service. And as you've heard me say on a number of occasions, that services and service levels drive costs. So that linkage between the assets you own, the condition they're in, the level of service you need them to provide, and how you need to finance the activities you need to do, will all start to come together. That just deals with your current assets. When you look at the various master plans, Peter and his team are walking through the development of a transportation master plan now. That deals with more expansion of your current assets, so more growth-driven needs. That's a separate part, completely separate from your asset management requirements. Those types of elements combine all in the long-range financial plan, and to your point, then that ties in now your funding plan as to how you're going to pay for all that various activity. So that will take the long-range financial plan element of that, we will probably not get to until twenty-six. There's a lot of work to get between now, where we are now, and where we need to be with respect to having a fully functional long-range financial plan.
Counselor Sloan? Thank you. Just so that I'm clear, Blaine, because you talk about financial reporting and perhaps quarterly reporting. The financial reporting for the last twelve days in December, from the nineteenth of December to the thirty-first, that won't come through until, I'm told, May or June. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan, yes. The the timeline this year, as council recalls, year-end was presented to council, I believe, in October of two thousand and twenty-four for two thousand and twenty-three. Jennifer and I have spoken, we'll start to shift everything backwards so that that the world that I'm accustomed to is council would see year-end in May, and then the business plan would start in roughly September and be concluded prior to the end of the year. So it would be in that May timeframe, Counselor Sloan.
Thank you. And just a follow-up. So this this talk of quarterly reporting, that's not really gonna be possible until June or July. So that that discussion of us having quarterly reporting of financial statements, could you give the it's gonna be at the earliest, the first half of the year? Is that correct?
Thank you, Counselor Sloan. Yes, and through you, Mr. Warden. Given this is the year that we start to sort of really ju- juggle the timeframes are and and embark on on a much more robust quarterly reporting. You're correct, that first quarterly report would probably be for Q two. So you'd see that give or take about a month or so after the end of Q two, give or take. But by the time we actually get things in place, establish that baseline established, and then start to pull some, what I'll call a calendarization in our forecasting, that would be for for Q three, going into Q three.
Thank you.
And keep in mind that while staff transition over to the new system, they're operating on two systems right now that have to be combined into one. That's a challenge in itself, and that's probably, I know it's not probably, it's what they'll be focused on to try and make that transition.
You're right, Mr. Warden. And and on top of that, the the easiest way I can describe it is there there's a lot of growing pains right now. They're necessary, but they're uncomfortable. But we we will get to where we need to get to, but there is a fair bit of work ahead of them. I haven't told the executive team all the the intricate details yet. That's still to come, but there's a fair bit of work that lies ahead this year.
Counselor Noble?
Through you, Warden. I I, the the homes budget, that's our biggest number. So it's easier to look at that and 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 look for comparisons. So I have both documents in front of me. I have the the finest, final one from from the Finance Committee that I'm looking at, and I'm comparing it again on the homes to the one that I talked about earlier. And so so with this one, the newest one, it has no disclaimer saying that that it, the first one said, these were the numbers up to December nineteenth. And so this next one, it it doesn't give me that that date that these numbers are up to. But this was the one that that we had for the February eleventh meeting. My question is, some, we're, when we're looking at a couple of weeks, I'm just gonna look at Bob- Bobier Villa, I'll I'll look at one. We're about a half a million dollars for for the numbers in wages from December nineteenth to the end of the year, a half a million dollars. I'm just looking for clarification on that part right now. I have a couple of questions. But does that make sense that we'd have a half a million dollars for Bobier Village for wages for two weeks? Or or is that a month, or just when I'm looking at those numbers?
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Noble. As mentioned prior, I said that the amount, there was some wages missing that wasn't up to December nineteenth. That was up to like probably middle of November. So we did that, plus there's accruals that we have to do for year end, which means there's wages that we bring forward. So there are a lot of things in there as well. There was an adjustment to that budget. So the budget changed as well for twenty-five, which was part of the answer to some savings on that budget. So.
Through you, Warden. So then, obviously, we had extra expenses that would come in over that extra time. And ideally, we should have extra revenue that offsets some of those expenses as they came in over that time. Does that make sense? Like, we'd we'd still collect revenue for those last couple of weeks, or whenever those numbers were actually up to date. We'd have, we'd have added revenue and added expenses. Does that make sense?
Through you, Mr. Warden. The numbers in that budget are forecasted, so they're estimates.
Blaine, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Generally, when you're looking at these types of reports, Counselor Noble, the costs would lag farther behind than your revenues. Your revenues would be more up-to-date, more accurate than your costs. They would lag more. But if I can just take a moment to try to give you some level of comfort. When I look at the two thousand and twenty-three year-end audited statements, our homes for senior services were seven hundred and one thousand five hundred and sixty-six dollars over budget. That included five hundred and seventy-two thousand in wage and benefit accruals, which the remainder was about a hundred and thirty thousand overspent because of increase in food costs. So when you look at the two thousand and twenty-three year, you're a hundred and thirty thousand. So if you remove the five hundred and seventy-two thousand in wage benefit accruals, you're a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over budget on, I haven't added up the millions of dollars that the budget is. And when I look at what's being added for our twenty-five budget, it's seventy-nine thousand dollars difference from, actually, a seventy-nine thousand dollar reduction from our twenty-four budget.
Okay, one last.
So I I guess my my next question is then, like I totally understand. Like, you you continue to get the expenses coming in, but you also still continue to get revenue coming in. And when I look at the original document, it said actual numbers up until December nineteenth, which makes sense, right? Actual numbers. They didn't say estimated numbers. It said actual numbers. So can somebody explain to me why our revenue for the three homes went down by a million dollars from the actual numbers on December, from December nineteenth to the to the new numbers that I have? We've got a loss of eleven million dollars. We should have had a gain because we would have had, you know, maybe a because we would have had, you know, maybe another month or at least another two weeks that we collected money. But we, we actually have a loss. So from the last document, there's a million dollars that have come out of the revenue side. And there's, from our actual numbers that, that were actual up until December nineteenth. So I'd like an understanding of that, but I also don't want to pass a budget till we have thorough numbers that we can all comprehend. And I'm not saying it may be it's just me and I, I'm not comprehending it. But I think it's important that we comprehend the numbers before we pass a budget.
Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a, a comment and a question, I guess, after that. I'd like to comment, first of all, council did discuss the, the fact that the budget has so much data and it is very difficult for people to kind of look at it and come to some kind of understanding of it. So we wanted some simple page that would explain that. And, and I I'm very pleased to see that we have, I think for me anyway, the, the explanation in a couple of pages where you deal with thirty five percent goes to a particular, goes to wages and forty one percent goes to services and twenty four percent goes to capital, which is a very nice, simple summation, which I think is very useful for a layperson like myself to kind of understand where all that budget goes. So thank you for that. Secondly, I'm still not clear on the issues that are raised by Counselor Sloan in terms of why we can't have a full numbers at the end of the year, and, you know, at the end of February. Is it because you have two systems? I'm hearing that you need to, you know, combine those two systems to understand, or is this usual practice that we don't get full numbers until much later in the year? Because, you know, if I'm looking at my own municipality, which is much smaller, of course, we have, we have full numbers within a month of the end of the year. So so I guess I'm asking, is there a simple explanation as to why we don't have full numbers until May or June?
So from my perspective, we've been starting a lot later than we should be. That's part of the reason, and takes that length of time to get things put together, but I'll let Blaine or Jen elaborate.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to members of council. So as you know, we are going through the implementation of a new software system. So we're in the process right now of we're in between the two systems, so we have numbers in one area, budget in another area. There's no way to combine those things. At the end of the day, we are still doing accruals for year end. We're still looking at what those numbers are. So as we clean up the year end, we do final A P A R. That doesn't normally come out until May. So we don't have a sophisticated forecasting methodology or method or way to get that into your hands, other than we put aside what we're doing and we go back to manual processes. So this year, most of this budget process has been manual. It has been very cumbersome. And so it's very difficult to just turn around information without triple checking everything because of those manual processes. I'm not trying to make excuses. I'm just trying to give you the picture of the fact that we don't have additional staffing in order to do these things. We're doing the implementation as well as the regular process. So that has been going on for a long time. And we're ready to be moving forward and getting ourselves more automated, but certainly if this is a stickler point that we must go back and drop everything and have forecasted numbers, it will delay the process significantly.
Yeah. Counselor Budget.
If I may, just to cut supplementary, so I guess, thank you for, for that explanation. So once the software is kind of combined and fixed, we would expect in future years that the numbers would, would appear much sooner, right? Thank you.
And like Counselor Shearer said, this is a budget. It can be a judge. It can be adjusted at any time during the year if we need to. That's, you have to understand that it is a budget. Counselor Whitner.
Yes, thank you, Warden. Excuse me, Jen. Jen, if that had asked me whether one point four nine percent, are we drawing down any reserves to get this number to make it artificial, or is this the real number?
Sorry, we are not using any reserves this year as far as this presentation goes. So one point four nine is the raw number. And that's all that we need in order to increase our budget to move forward.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Say anything further? If not, it's been a very robust debate. There's no further. I'll ask Catherine to read the the resolution.
Resolved that the two thousand and twenty five budget, as summarized in the two thousand and twenty five proposed business plan and budget in Appendix A, be approved with a tax rate increase of one point four nine percent. And that council directs that a bylaw generally in the form of Appendix B be added to March, the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five agenda to adopt the two thousand and twenty five budget. And that this resolution constitutes notice for the purposes of bylaw twenty four fifteen that council intends to consider a bylaw to adopt the two thousand and twenty five budget at its March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting. And that the borrowing bylaw, twenty five oh eight, as outlined in Appendix C, be approved as presented. And that the treasurer and warden be authorized to carry out option number two related to debt financing for Terrace Lodge in the amount of six million for ten years. And that the County of Elgin will undertake an analysis of shared services with their local municipal partners in two thousand and twenty five and report back. And that in response to the letter from the municipality of Central Elgin, staff be directed to reach out to Hospice Elgin to advise them of the process for the county's newly established grants program and ask that they fill out an application for consideration under this program.
Okay. Louver and Secretary. Counselor Henson, Counselor Cookett. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Noble?
Through you, Warden. I, I really still want to know about the revenue on the homes and how that went down. So I just want to make sure that somewhere in this process that comes back to this council and, and we have a thorough understanding of where that is. And I'll, I'll just ask while I'm here, can we record this vote?
Sure. Blaine, go ahead.
Thank you, Lord and Jones. Counselor Noble, just, I, I want to get on the same page with you. So I'm, I'm looking at the February eleventh presentation where Jennifer delivered a presentation that identified, and the information was broken down to try to address the questions that were raised in the previous session. And so when I'm looking at, and I'm, I'm I'm looking at the PDF that came out of that, because that's the way I saved the presentation, but it was question two, and there was a few slides related to question two, but three of them relate to the homes budget. First one, Bobbiar Villa, then Elgin Manor, then Terrace Lodge. And we've got the columns in that, where two thousand and twenty four budget, two thousand and twenty four year end forecast, two thousand and twenty five proposed budget, and then budget change twenty four to twenty five. So and this would be the most accurate and up to date information that, that I think we have. Because I want to make sure your concern is addressed. So when I look at, at this, I, I'm not seeing the, the delta that you're identifying.
Through you, Warden. So when I look at the original document that we had, Blaine, and I compare it to the final one. And, and so the original one said actuals to December nineteenth. So when I compare that to the next one, when I look at the revenue, the, the, the revenue for, for Bobbiar Village, the first one, the revenue went down by a hundred and, let me go back to the other slide. Revenue went down by a hundred and ten, hundred and twenty thousand dollars, say. It went from, I'm doing the math in my head, it's not really working at this point. Revenue from the original document as of December nineteenth was seven million, one hundred and fifty thousand. Revenue on the next, when we had our next meeting, it went down to six hundred and ninety six hundred, six million, nine hundred and fifty eight thousand. And, and, and the other ones are all kind of the same. So I guess if we're looking at actual numbers for revenue, that actual numbers are actual numbers unless somewhere in our budget, we're giving refunds of million, a million dollars or so. I, I'm just looking for an answer, but that's, that's those two pages.
Thank you, Counselor Noble. I appreciate the additional information. So, and, and I know there was some corrections made from the very first presentation. I know there was a couple of, of errors that Jennifer found as she went through it in more detail, following the questions that committee had on the first session. So when I'm looking at, at again, this February eleventh presentation, I'm seeing in your revenue line, a two thousand and twenty four budget of six point, just over six point eight million, and a two thousand and twenty four year end forecast of just shy of six point nine seven million. So perhaps you and I could take this offline and, and we could go through this together and make sure that we're on the same page, because I do want to make sure your, your concern is addressed. But I do know that from the first presentation, the committee saw there were a number of corrections made.
Yeah. Sorry, just I think through you, Warden, to blame that if we could clarify those corrections, then I think it'd be easy. We'll do that offline. Is that okay? I mean, for me. Thank you.
Jen, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Counselor Sloan and Counselor Noble. From the period of time that we did the original accrual, the, the original numbers, we did do some accruals because there is one time funding that we get throughout the year. So that one time funding is sometimes available to us until that March year end. So it goes from April to March, which is the ministry's year end. So those accruals could have potentially caused that issue. We would have done the accrual because it's not expected to be spent in this year, but it would be something that we would spend in the next year. So it would have taken the revenue down. And no, it isn't a refund, but if we don't spend it, it would be a refund because we would have to send it back to the ministry.
I guess we'll take a short break while Richard, Richard leaves. We still have forum, so, okay. All right. Okay, so there's no further questions. We call the vote? Oh, sorry.
Fairness, Mr. Warden, so I think Counselor Noble asked for a recorded vote. So if one of our members is not in the room, I think we can wait a minute.
Yeah, we, another two minutes isn't going to make any difference. Okay. We'll come back to order quickly, and we have been requested a recorded vote on the motion. Asked for any further questions, none have been received, so we'll go through with the vote.
Counselor Latham.
Sorry, this is for the resolution for the budget, item six point four, the resolution that's in front of us. So that's, that's the full budget request.
Resolved that the two thousand and twenty five budget, as summarized in the two thousand and twenty five proposed business plan and budget in Appendix A, be approved with a tax rate increase of one point four nine percent. And that council directs that a bylaw generally in the form of Appendix B be added to the March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five agenda to adopt the two thousand and twenty five budget. And that this resolution constitutes notice for the purposes of bylaw twenty four fifteen that council intends to consider a bylaw to adopt the two thousand and twenty five budget at its March eleventh, two thousand and twenty five meeting. And that the borrowing bylaw, twenty five oh eight, as outlined in Appendix C, be approved as presented. And that the treasurer and warden be authorized to carry out option number two related to debt financing for Terrace Lodge in the amount of six million for ten years. And that the County of Elgin will undertake an analysis of shared services with their local municipal partners in two thousand and twenty five and report back. And that in response to the letter from the municipality of Central Elgin, staff be directed to reach out to Hospice Elgin to advise them of the process for the county's newly established grants program and ask that they fill out an application for consideration under this program. Counselor Latham. Counselor Hens. Counselor.
Nay.
Counselor Noble.
No.
Counselor Cookett.
Yes.
Counselor Jagir.
Yay.
Counselor Widner.
Yes.
Deputy Warden Ketchaba.
Yes.
Warden Jones.
Yes.
Seven two, the motion is carried.
Hey, thank you, Catherine. Moving down, uh I'll recognize Counselor Sloan as another appointment. Um moving down to correspondence, uh versus appointment of Brent Kletterbuck to the Thames Senate, Sidneyham uh recent uh Drinking Water Source Protection Committee for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine term. I just make uh one comment. Uh Brent's been on this committee since its inception and I think he's a, he is a wealth of knowledge based on uh the issues that have been dealt with over the many years since its inception. So I fully support Brent. Be a mover and a secuder, please. Hens and Ketchaba. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Motion carries. Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
Uh yes, during the break, I was uh in, in uh contact with my team. So the accrual that's been done for the year end is one point three million dollars and it is related all to one-time funding. Allied Health Professional Funding, two hundred and seventeen thousand. BSO Funding, five thousand. BSO Funding for PSWs, forty-seven thousand. BSO Recreation, eight thousand. Boebier Villa Long-Term Care Medication Safety, five thousand. Boebier Villa Resident Health, one thousand. HINF Costs, six thousand. HINF Supplemental Base Costs, forty-two thousand. Integrated Technology, sixty-six thousand. IPAC Lead, five thousand. IPAC Training, forty-seven thousand. Lab Cost Recovery, two thousand. MC False Prevention, eight thousand. One-Time Equipment and Training, a hundred and ninety-two dollars. Um one-time funding increase, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand. And Prep LTC, two hundred and forty-seven thousand for a total of three, one point three million. And then profit um in the year end. So that was what we moved. I think that's close to your number of one point four. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Okay, moving on to items for information. Cassette and Jenda, is there anything there anybody would like to highlight? Seeing none, we have resolution, please.
Resolved that correspondence items seven point two point one to seven point two point three be received and filed.
Mover and Secuder, please. Uh Widner and Noble. All in favor? Motion carries. Next, other business, uh statements and inquiries. I don't think we have any. Uh no submotion, uh we've already dealt with matters of urgency. Not a motion to go on the close. Oh, no, no, close tonight, today. So minutes. Have that already? Down to uh recommendations, committee of the whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of committee of the whole.
Mover and Secuder, please. Ketchaba and Jagir. All in favor? Closed. Carried. It's uh consideration of bylaws.
Being a, sorry, Bylaw Number twenty-five oh eight, the borrowing bylaw, being a bylaw to authorize the warden and treasurer to borrow from time to time to meet current expenditures during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Resolved that Bylaw Number twenty-five oh eight be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and Secuder, please. Latham and Noble. All in favor? Motion carries.
Bylaw Number twenty-five oh nine, confirmation. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Resolved that Bylaw Number twenty-five oh nine be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and Secuder, please. Cookett and Ketchaba. All in favor? Motion carries. And finally?
Resolved that we do now adjourn at twelve oh seven PM to meet again on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five at nine o'clock AM.
Mover and Secuder, please. Widner and Hens. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you all.